We call the special meeting in the planning and zoning commission to order. Seated tonight are five regular members, Ben Philbrook, Gardiner Young, myself, David Rusman, Lynn Conway, Fred Deitman. Also present is Ryan Deese, our alternate Chuck Sheehan, and our new member Gary Belkey, who's an alternate. Minutes? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Do I hear? Is this working? Am I supposed to do something?
Yeah, it helps if people can talk directly into the mic.
Hello, hello.
The camera better do.
Okay.
All right, second the motion, second the motion to approve the minutes.
Any discussion?
We look thorough.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
You weren't here.
Yes.
Staff, administrative review.
Yeah, item five, excuse me, 4D administrative review, 4D1 is Sea Coast Mushrooms LLC, Chris Pacico and Terenzia Associates, pre-application for proposed mushroom farm to include a 6,000 to 8,000 square foot barn, property located at Tagawak Road, Stonington, Assessor's Map 85, Lot 2, excuse me, Block 2, Lot 1, Zone LI 130. The applicants just requested a preliminary discussion to let you know what they are planning for this. As you remember, they had a regulation amendment that was approved by the commission to allow agriculture in the LI 130 district.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. It's a pleasure to see you all in person, not little square rectangular boxes on my computer. Actually, I did get dressed up today. Good thing, my client said, good thing we put pants on, most of us. Usually, we're seeing you from the top up. So I'm just going to bring up the map on the screen, so I just got to go over and flip the window.
Thanks, Keith, that's better.
I also have boards, if it's easier to see those, but that might be a little smaller. And I brought copies of this map. I don't know if it's in your packages.
I think we have it in our package.
Do you have them? All right. And if anyone from the public wants a copy, this is the same map that I'll be presenting. Thank you again for the applicant Sergio Terenzia. I am the president and principal of Terenzia and Associates with offices located at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. I've been working with Mr. Chris Pacico of Sea Coast Mushrooms LLC on this new endeavor for him, not new business, but a new property location for site development of a new facility to support his mushroom growing, mushroom farm, mushroom growing. The property that's subject of the, that's going to be subject to an application, it would, it's going to require a site plan approval from your commission. As such, we wanted to come before your commission this evening to present the conceptual plan for, for the facility. As mentioned by your town planner, Keith Bryans, and I think you all are familiar, that Mr. Pacico is in front of you for a zone change for this property. Property is located at, on Tagawak Road, Map 85, Block 2, Lot 1. I believe just north of, of the 95 there, the interchange. And the, the property is completely, pretty much mostly wooded, but does have some farm fields. Historically, Mr. Pacico has informed me that the, the property had been farmed for some time prior to established in, his, his business was established in June 20, 2015. And he's pretty much outgrown his, the, his current location, and this was an ideal spot with respect to location and the size of the property for him to potentially relocate. It's a 38.2 acre parcel. It's zoned light industrial, consists of wooded areas, some wetlands, some cleared farm fields, and stone walls. As you can see by the map, I'm going to zoom in a little bit here, there's a utility line that runs pretty much from north, east, to the southeast portion. This area here, you can see this utility line that, that splits the, that crosses the lot. The area is shown in blue. The blue hatched areas were flagged by Abazinis Environmental Services, who is a licensed soil scientist and biologist, and he identified the location of the wetlands on the property. As you can see, the wetlands run pretty much all the way east to, to west on the property, starting at Tagawak Road, and running in a westerly direction. And they, they, you know, follow the low-lying areas on the site. As I mentioned, it has a history of farming, dates back almost 100 years to 1926. Portions of the farm had been parceled off through eminent domain in the construction of 95, and some of it had been donated to the town of Stonington for development of ball fields and commuter lot, as they were subdivided and sold off. The remaining lot is what you see here, and you can see there's some farm fields as you access the lot from the, from the east. We are proposing to utilize an existing farm road. It's a little bit difficult to see, but I'll zoom in here. Just south of the, the wetlands, there's an existing farm road that runs just north of the farm field as you enter the property. This then opens up to a field in the rear, and this is where Mr. Pacico intends to develop his mushroom-growing facility. You can see the, the larger building, it's a 60 by 100, it's going to be a prefabricated metal building, located in an already cleared area. Just south of that, we show the grow containers, and Mr. Pacico's here this evening. He may have gotten into some of his, what his operations entail, but these containers are where a portion of the growing process take place. And he's proposing five, they're basically shipping containers that have been converted. And one of them houses, my understanding is, one of them houses all the equipment for the climate control for the four containers in which he grows the mushrooms, because it's a very particular process of making sure you control the, the light, humidity, temperature, to get the perfect environment to grow his mushrooms. And he can go into much more detail than I can, if you care to, to hear about it this The parcel is, is subject to some buffering, but only for commercial uses. It's something that I have discussed with your town planner. We have no intentions of going into anywhere near the buffers. As you can see, we've centrally located the proposed development, and it's significantly far from the road. I would say almost 1,000 feet from the road, so it will not be visible. Mr. Pacico has indicated he wants to keep his privacy, although he, he, he enjoys the popularity of his mushrooms. People have been stopping by to, to take tours of his operation, and he'd rather be able to do that in a more private and setback setting, with maybe some ability to put a farm stand up in the future at, at some point, you know, to, to inform people and educate people on mushroom growing. So the, the buffers and the setbacks, the property is surrounded by residential uses and zones. You can see on your map, there is the zone lines that identify the GBR 130 to the east and also to the, to the west. Those properties are zoned residential, and as such, they require for any commercial uses, a 100-foot buffer, a 100-foot buffer zone, including, I believe it's a 25 or a 50-foot, let me just check here, just to make sure. Yeah, the 100-foot with a 50-foot screen required for anything, any type of commercial or manufacturing use, zoning that zone. To the north and the south are, it's, they are commercially zoned, the same zone as the light industrial, excuse me, industrial zoned. However, they are, as indicated on the property cards, residential uses. So as such, we are required to provide a 50-foot buffer with a 25-foot screen, should there be a commercial or manufacturing use. It wasn't clear if agriculture falls into those, but that's why we're here tonight, to get some clarification on such. But as you can see from the map, as I've indicated, well, there's no intention to even go into that area, because Mr. Pacico is going to preserve not only his privacy, but wants to also be a good neighbor to those properties adjacent to him. And there's really no need to encroach in those areas with the, with the operation, given that there's so much, there's a, there's a healthy amount of land, and for the amount of work, the amount that he needs to do this for startup of his operation, with obviously a room, room to expand.
Thank you. Sergio, does any, anyone have any questions at this time?
The, the red line that runs along the wetlands, is that the setback?
So the red line that runs 50 feet off of the, excuse me, 100 feet off of the wetlands is the upland review zone, upland review area. So that was the area that's subject to wetlands jurisdictional review.
And have the wetlands people weighed in yet?
So we have not gone to the wetlands commission, however, we've, Mr. Pacico has met with the wetlands enforcement officer, Candace Palmer, and she has indicated as long as we remain outside of that 100-foot upland review area, or remain in areas that have already been disturbed by the farming use, there is no requirement to go to the inland wetlands commission.
Oh, well, okay. So that's why the building infringes on that 100-foot buffer?
It does, but only in the areas that have already been historically used for farm use.
So when you said historically used for farm use, what, what are we talking about here from a timeframe perspective?
The farm uses, it's back to 1926, and I believe the fields have been maintained since then, but Mr. Pacico can probably answer that.
Are they, are the hayfields, hayfields?
Yes.
Oh, they're, they're currently hayfields?
Currently hayfields, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I, I did have one question as well. So I think in the description, it said that the utilities might be, might be underground, may not be underground, says that will likely, the electrical power from Tagawak Road that will likely pass underground for approximately 1,200 feet. What, what is going to influence that?
So there's two options that we, we haven't been able to speak to Eversource yet, but there is a transmission line that runs through the property. We would hope that we could tap into that closer to the facility, so we don't have to run a line all the way from Tagawak. It's not likely that they'll allow that, because it is, we believe it is a transmission line. So to your question, we have not decided if it'll be overhead or underground, but my client is leaning towards putting it underground. But that'll have to be coordinated with Eversource.
Okay, and so that'll be with the final proposal?
Yeah.
That'll be determined before that?
Yeah, we will coordinate with Eversource before we come back to this commission again.
Okay. And then I also heard you say, at this time, it's one building, and then the five, the five grow buildings. At any point, would you think you were going to go into that buffered area, or is the, the plan that you'd always maintain the 100-foot buffer, even with an expansion?
I can't guarantee that we would not expand into the 100-foot buffer, but if we did, we'd have to go to inland wetlands first, before we come to this commission.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think you've done a nice job, I listen. You wouldn't see anything from the road. Ben, Gardiner, Fred?
What's that?
Okay, anyone else over there? Chuck?
As you say, it's so far away from the road.
The water supply to support the, the growing process, where is that coming?
I'm not, I believe we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to put in a, a private well, or public, whatever they consider it. We'd have to install a well.
Any idea what the withdrawal rate will be for that well?
I'd, not at this time, no.
If it is a high withdrawal rate, you know, I know it'll be coordinated with Ledge Light, and they're very conscious of getting near any of the other wells in the area, but, but that would be a concern, and I think it should be engineered carefully.
How much water do you use?
We have five growings, four growings I've been running now, we go through about 40 gallons a day.
Forty?
Four, sure.
Forty.
I think, I can first get some more water, take a shower, then we'll be using for growing.
Okay, that's very.
So I guess that sort of answers the second question as well, is there's, there's no wastewater issues associated with this that, that are exotic, where it would require a special treatment, review from DEP, or a special septic system review from DEP?
There's no process water that comes off of the, you can, you can speak to that.
About the process, it doesn't, there's no chemicals used in the entire production process, it's just, we use, we use well water now, and there's no chemical introduced on that at all. It's solely just ground water.
Any floodplains on, on the property?
I don't believe so, no.
That would be a concern if, if there is, you know, obviously with the structure. And lastly, you know, just, just an observation, and this goes along with the question that Lynn asked, if, if the utilities are, are above ground or below ground, I would much prefer below ground.
We would as well, I believe.
I'm wondering why they're not run in the same quarter as the driveway?
So if, we, we would run them actually just to the south of the driveway, in the, through the farm field, along the, the stone wall. There's a, it's not easily seen here, but there's a stone wall that runs east to west, and the, we would.
Sergio, don't, don't trouble yourself with it. I, I know you're very careful about these things, Ken.
We will consider, we will consider it.
Just an issue to be dealt with as you, as the design matured.
Understood, thank you.
And I do like this format for conceptual review.
Thank you.
No further questions.
Chuck, there is a well proposed on the map, and you can see it's nowhere near anyone else's well.
Yeah, we.
Dead center above the building.
We identify the radii on those well. I know it's a little difficult to see with the.
I was more concerned with the withdrawal rate.
The withdrawal rate.
You know, some agricultural operations, particularly in, you know, hydroponic, which this is not, but in hydroponic usage, you get into withdrawal rates that are exotic. And when you have withdrawal rates like that, you can easily draw down an adjacent well, and you've got to be very careful. But this is not one of those cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergio.
Nothing further? Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Our next item here is item 4D2, 21169, C O N, Walter Johnson, Melissa Clodier, zoning permit application to allow 100 square feet of retail use in an existing salon, property located at 86 Dennison Avenue Mystic, Assessor's Map 173, Block 10, Lot 1, Zone CS5. With this application, it's an existing salon at 86 Dennison Avenue, that's the large blue building at Mistoxid in Greenville. They're looking to use a part of the existing salon as a retail use, that's sort of part of the business, but it's, it's not the typical, you know, hairdresser's shelling shampoo, it's just some other retail stuff. It's sort of a gray area, whether it needs a zoning permit, needs to come to the commission, but we have it here just to keep them out of any potential trouble.
It's only 100 square feet.
Yeah, yeah. And retail is allowed in that zone, there's no zoning issues with it, but just figured it should come here.
Anyone have any questions on that?
I couldn't understand the drawing. It was too faded in, in the package to really comprehend. So somebody could just walk me through, they want to put in some shelving, and that's about it, really?
Yeah, it really is just some shelving and sort of a separate room of the salon.
Thank you, I have no problem.
No problem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, aye.
Was there an actual motion on that?
No, do we need a motion? We'll take a motion. Can I make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve whatever zoning permit application.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Vote, aye, aye.
And item 4D3, it's commission review of applications, PZ 1403 SUP and CAM Mystic Motor Inn, and PZ 2102 SPA Ocean Breeze Land Company, property located at 7 Williams Ave. Mystic, Assessor's Map 174, Block 12, Lot 10, Zone LS5. And this is something that Chairman.
Does anyone here from Mystic Motor Inn or Ocean Breeze? Had they been notified, correct?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I spoke to the property owner.
I think somebody's, I see somebody coming through the door.
Oh, no, that's not, no, that's Dave. Well, the problem is, they don't know what no means. We granted them a special use permit a few months ago, saying that they could have an expansion of their deck, but at that time, we said no amplified or live music. Two weeks ago, you could hear the music in Lord's Point. It was outdoors. This weekend, they've had two or three concerts, outdoors. We asked to remove our Adirondack chairs, they're scattered all over the hill. At the present time, we have a cease and desist order on them. They have an appeal period on that. We haven't heard anything on that. We've notified the State Liquor Commission because of the infraction. And I wish they were here, they could answer some questions, but they seem to ignore us all along. We were in half attic about saying there was no live music amplified or also. They've got signs up saying they're going to have future functions with live music. We don't have too many options, but under our zoning regulations, we can have a special hearing to show cause why we can't revoke the special use permit. So I would.
Why we can't or can?
Why we can.
Thank you.
Revoke the special use permit. But it's a procedure, but I think, I personally, I think we should not let them just go along with this. We gotta, we gotta continue to be on it, and they could have the courtesy enough to come, but they didn't. So if we have to have a special meeting to go over this next few weeks, we'll have it, and to have a show cause hearing for them. You know, this isn't a residential area. You can hear it all downtown Mystic, you can hear it in Cove Road, I mean, you can hear it in Lord's Point, someone in Lord's Point thought the neighbor having a concert in the backyard. I mean, it's ridiculous. If you want to hear music, you can have your own private music out in the backyard in the sun, but we don't have to have what they decided we want to listen to. So, and does any members, any other members have any thoughts on this?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ryan. If I can, I live up on Boradell, just behind that, and I can agree with you, you can hear it. Like, it pervades when they're having that live music up there, so it's very noticeable. And I know we were here in the meeting, and we made it very clear that that was not to be, they were supposed to be doing that.
So what do we have to do to, to proceed?
I'll have to ask Keith.
When is the cease and desist issued?
Two days from now. So in two days from now, the zoning official will work with the town attorney to get a court injunction, which is basically the court ordering someone to stop violating the zoning regulations. That's the most straightforward path on something like this, where someone gets in serious trouble if they're disobeying the court's order, and it makes it clear that even next year, they can't do it, they can't do it in the future. The show cause hearing, I know I mentioned that to you.
Yeah.
A while ago, the more I look into it, I'm not sure it's really an option for something like this. This is what Judge Fuller's land use treatise says on something like that. It says, "If the conditions of the special use permit are violated, the remedy is a zoning enforcement proceeding, since there is no statutory provision allowing revocation or expiration of special use permits." So we can talk to the town attorney about, about it, but it looks like revoking the permit wouldn't be the best option, especially because it gives someone another, another thing to appeal and to drag it on for a while. The most direct path forward is cease and desist order injunction from the court. So, you know, we plan on going forward with that as soon as we can with the town attorney.
In the meantime, Keith, are they being fined?
No, that'll come from that process.
And how, is it my understanding that there's been dialogue with the town that started in 2020? How long has this dialogue been going on?
Oh, yeah, this has, there have been enforcement issues last summer or two, where we issued them a cease and desist order, and they, they would stop for a while, and of course, it stopped for the, for the winter, and then started back up again. So we are just going straight to the court injunction at this point. And I should clarify that they are allowed to have live music indoors.
Indoors, yeah.
Because they, they might predate zoning altogether, or at least the rules for that. So if they advertise for live music, you know, they usually don't advertise whether it's indoors or outdoors. So they can do it indoors, they can't do it outdoors.
So I went by there today, drove by, and it looks as if there's a stage being built.
That's the deck we approved.
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't know if that is the deck, I think it, it might be a stage.
So I don't know if they, if that needs any type of permit as well, so it's just something to consider?
Right, right, that's another thing with it. You know, they have some temporary seating out there that, you know, because of the more flexible COVID rules, might be able to stay until.
That's okay.
Next March. Well, there is a new, a new public act that allows that to continue until March 2022, but, you know, that's not really the issue, is the outdoor music is the, is the big problem.
Right, it's not, it's not the seating for eating, it's.
Right, right. So it's definitely something that, you know. SO IT'S DEFINITELY SOMETHING THAT, YOU KNOW, WE'RE GOING TO DIRECTLY GO TO THE COURT INJUNCTION ON.
OK, ANY OTHER COMMENTS, BEN?
ON FRIDAY, I DID GO OVER THERE TO INVESTIGATE WHEN THERE WAS MUSIC AND THERE IS A MINOR BANDSTAND SET UP IN FRONT OF IMPORTED SAND.
AND CAN YOU SPEAK INTO THE MIC THIS?
THERE IS A LITTLE BANDSTAND IN QUOTE SET UP BUT IT HAS PERMANENT LIGHTING AND THERE IS A IMPORTED BEACH CREATED IN FRONT OF THIS BANDSTAND. AND I GUESS I WOULD LEAN TO GO WITH KEITH'S ROUTE AND WAIT FOR THE COURT INJUNCTION. I MEAN, WE COULD STILL CONSIDER.
WE'D CONSIDER IT, YEAH.
SHOW CAUSE HEARING BUT IT DOESN'T SOUND LIKE WE'RE GOING TO GET VERY FAR.
NO.
I GUESS I WOULD PUSH FOR THE INJUNCTION. BUT WHAT HAPPENS IF THEY DO COME UP BY THURSDAY WITH A COUNTER TO THE CEASE AND, I MEAN WHAT HAPPENS?
THEY WOULD APPEAL TO THE ZONING BOARD OF APPEALS AND THEY WOULD HAVE TO ARGUE BEFORE THE ZONING BOARD OF APPEALS THAT THE ZONING OFFICIAL'S CEASE AND DESIST ORDER WAS SOMEHOW IN ERROR.
BUT IT WOULD BE IN EFFECT UNTIL THEN, CORRECT?
UM.
THE CEASE AND DESIST.
YEAH, I THINK IT WOULD BE.
AND WHEN'S THE NEXT ZONING BOARD OF APPEALS MEETING?
THEY, ALL RIGHT, YEAH, THEY'RE NOT HAVING ONE NEXT MONTH.
SO IT WOULD HAVE TO GO THROUGH THE NORMAL CHANNELS.
BEN, DO YOU HAVE SOMETHING TO SAY?
I WONDERED WHY THE INJUNCTION WE SAW PRIOR TO IDENTIFY THE ORDER TO BE. CEASE AND DESIST, YOU KNOW, OVER THE YEAR AND VIOLATION OF THE CEASE AND DESIST ORDER FROM LAST YEAR. IF YOU'RE GOING TO SEEK INJUNCTIONS OR IT SEEMS THAT SOME OF THE CONDITIONS ARE THE EXISTENT OF THAT, OR DO THEY GO TO THE APPEAL AND SEE IF THAT IS OR NOT.
YEAH, AND, YOU KNOW, THE WAITING FOR THE APPEAL PERIOD TO BE UP IS ONLY TWO MORE DAYS UNTIL THURSDAY.
BUT THAT INJUNCTION WOULD BE SAW REGARDLESS OF WHETHER THEY SEEK THEIR PERIOD TO BE DONE.
MAYBE IT COULD. I MEAN, ONE OF THE REASONS TO NOT JUMP RIGHT TO THE COURT INJUNCTION, IT'S ALMOST LIKE A LAW AND ORDER EPISODE, YOU KNOW, WHERE THE MORE, YOU WANT TO HAVE A GOOD WINNING CASE AND SORT OF SHOW THAT THERE'S A PATTERN OF THEM DOING THIS BEFORE YOU GO TO THE COURT FOR EVERYTHING.
WE'LL KEEP YOU INFORM.
SO JUST SO I UNDERSTAND THE TIMELINE HERE, KEITH. IN 2020, THERE WAS DIALOGUE BACK AND FORTH BETWEEN THE TOWN, WE HAD A CEASE AND DESIST ORDER AND EVERYBODY AGREED AT THAT TIME, CORRECT?
RIGHT.
AND THEY DID NOT VIOLATE THAT CEASE AND DESIST ORDER. UNTIL WHEN?
I CAN'T SAY FOR A FACT THEY DIDN'T VIOLATE THE CEASE AND DESIST ORDER BUT WE GAVE THEM A CEASE AND DESIST ORDER. YOU KNOW, EVENTUALLY THEY DID STOP BUT SOME OF THAT MIGHT HAVE JUST BEEN THE COOLER WEATHER. BUT THEY NEVER APPEAL THAT ONE TO THE ZONING BOARD OF APPEALS SO THEY'RE NOT ARGUING THAT THEY ARE ABLE TO DO IT.
THEY JUST DO IT.
WHERE SOMETIMES IN ZONING CASES, YOU KNOW, WE SAY YOU CAN'T DO SOMETHING AND THEY SAY, WELL, YOU'RE MISTAKEN, WE CAN DO IT AND HERE'S WHY. IT'S NOT THAT SORT OF THING.
SO I GUESS WHAT I'M CONFUSED ABOUT ARE A COUPLE OF THINGS. I WISH THIS HAD COME UP WHEN WE HAD THE PLANNING AND ZONING MEETING WHERE WE TALKED ABOUT THE EXTENSION OF THE PATIO ET CETERA. I THINK THAT WOULD HAVE BEEN A GOOD TIME TO DISCUSS IT, IT WAS AN OPPORTUNITY TO BRING IT TO THE FOREFRONT. I DON'T UNDERSTAND WHY FINES HAVE NOT BEEN LEVEYED FOR ANY VIOLATION OF THE CEASE AND DESIST. I DON'T UNDERSTAND THAT. AND I DO THINK IT WOULD BE REALLY GOOD TO HAVE A TIMELINE OF THIS IS WHEN WE HAD THE DIALOGUE, THIS IS WHEN THE ORIGINAL CEASE AND DESIST, THIS IS HOW MANY TIMES THAT WAS VIOLATED, THIS IS WHEN WE WENT BACK TO THEM ET CETERA BECAUSE, YOU KNOW, I THINK THE TOWN AND THE RESIDENTS HAVE BEEN VERY PATIENT AND REASONABLE. AND, YOU KNOW, I THINK WE SHOULD TAKE ACTION QUICKLY.
YEAH, WE DO HAVE ALL THAT INFORMATION.
SO I KNOW, UNDERSTAND WHAT YOU'RE SAYING TWO DAYS BUT I WOULD HATE TO HAVE IT LINGER ANOTHER MONTH, LET'S PUT IT THAT WAY BECAUSE THEN WE'RE GOING TO GET BACK TO THE, WELL, IT'S THE COOLER WEATHER AND SO IS IT REALLY, YOU KNOW, COMPLYING OR IS IT JUST, WELL, THE WEATHER IS NOW.
THAT'S WHY WE WANT THE COURT INJUNCTION TOO SO IT'S JUST THE ORDER FROM THE COURT NOT TO DO IT THIS YEAR, NEXT YEAR, FOREVER. AND WE DO HAVE THAT INFORMATION, I JUST DON'T HAVE IT HANDY, I CAN GET YOU THAT.
IS IT THE SAME MANAGEMENT LAST YEAR AND THIS YEAR?
YEAH, I BELIEVE SO.
YOU NEVER KNOW WITH RESTRANTS, THEY SWITCH EVERY WEEK.
AND WHEN DO THE FINES START COMING INTO EFFECT?
IT'LL BE ONCE THE COURT ISSUES THE FINES.
OH, WE DON'T HAVE.
NO, WE CAN'T FIND. WE JUST TAKE FEES.
OH.
AND, YOU KNOW, THE ENFORCEMENT ISSUES WERE MENTIONED, I KNOW THEY WERE MENTIONED IN THE STAFF REPORT FOR THAT DECK EXPANSION THAT WAS BEFORE YOU, BEFORE. AND, YOU KNOW, YOU DID WHAT YOU WERE SUPPOSED TO DO ANYWAY ON THAT, YOU HAD THE STIPULATION THERE THAT SAID NO OUTDOOR LIVE MUSIC AND REALLY IT'S ALL YOU COULD DO AT THAT POINT BECAUSE THE APPLICATION CONFORM TO THE ZONING REGULATIONS AND THAT'S SORT OF, THAT'S WHAT THE PERMANENT PROCESS IS FOR WHERE YOU PROBABLY WOULDN'T BE ABLE TO SAY NO BASED ON SOME PREVIOUS ACTION LIKE THAT.
SO.
JUST BECAUSE THE PERMIT'S SORT OF, THE APPLICATION IS IN INTENT TO COMPLY WITH THE REGULATIONS.
A QUESTION FOR YOU, KEITH, IF SOMEBODY LIKE THIS CAN ignore a cease and desist order WITHOUT ESSENTIALLY ANY PENALTY, WHAT'S TO SAY THERE WON'T Ignore A COURT INJUNCTION? WHERE'S OUR ENFORCEMENT POWERS HERE?
THE REAL ENFORCEMENT POWERS COME FROM THE COURT. I MEAN, THE STATES WROTE UP ALL THESE LAWS ABOUT ZONING WITH THE INTENTION OF HAVING MUNICIPAL ZONING ENFORCEMENT BEING PRETTY WEAK. YOU KNOW, IT'S A LOT LESS ENFORCEMENT THAN THE POLICE HAVE TO JUST GO AND SHUT SOMEONE DOWN AND STOP IT AT EVERY STEP, THERE'S A POSSIBLE APPEALS THAT THEY CAN DO TO THE ZONING BOARD OF APPEALS. SO THAT'S WHY KICKING IT UP TO THE COURT IS WHERE THE HEAVY HAMMER COMES IN WHERE YOU'RE IGNORING THE COURT, THAT'S WHEN YOU GET IN SERIOUS TROUBLE OF, I MEAN, THEY CAN EVEN HAVE YOU ARRESTED IF YOU DO THAT, IF YOU KEEP DOING IT.
THANKS, KEITH.
THANK YOU, KEITH.
KEITH, IS THERE ANY NOISE ORDNANCE IN TOWN THAT THIS IS VIOLATING?
WE DO HAVE ONE. IT'S A MUNICIPAL ORDNANCE THAT THE POLICE ENFORCE BUT IT TENDS TO BE MORE OF DISTURBING THINGS LATE AT NIGHT. YOU KNOW, TYPICAL THING LIKE OUTDOOR MUSIC PROBABLY DOESN'T MEET THAT.
SO WHAT IS IN THE DB LEVEL OR ANYTHING LIKE THAT THAT'S MEASURABLE AT THE PROPERTY LINE?
I DON'T THINK IT'S THAT SPECIFIC, IT'S MORE GENERAL. YOU KNOW, MORE GENERAL DISTURBING THE PIECE AFTER A CERTAIN HOUR, THAT SORT OF THING.
I THINK WE SHOULD HAVE A DESCO LEVEL FOR OUTDOOR MUSIC.
MAYBE, I MEAN THEY.
IN THE FUTURE, NEXT WEEK.
YEAH.
NOISE ORDNANCES ARE TOUGH BECAUSE WHAT REGULATES SOMETHING LIKE THIS COULD ALSO SHUT DOWN SOMEBODY USING A LAWNMOWER UNDER SOME INSTANCE. SO YOU HAVE TO BE VERY CAREFUL. I WAS JUST CURIOUS IF IN THIS CASE, IF WE HAD A NOISE ORDNANCE AND THE NOISE ORDNANCE HAD SOME TEETH IN IT, IF THAT WOULDN'T BE A WAY TO GET SOME IMMEDIATE ACTION IF THEY START UP AGAIN TO GET, YOU KNOW, THE JOUDARM'S INVOLVED AND GO OVER THERE TO SHUN DOWN.
MAYBE, YOU KNOW, MAYBE THE POLICE WOULD DO SOMETHING IF IT WERE LOUD ENOUGH BUT I THINK.
THEY'D LOOK INTO THAT, SEE IF THERE'S ANY WAY THAT THEY COULD KEEP AN EYE ON IT TO SEE IF THEY HAVE SOME JURISDICTION WITHIN THAT ORDNANCE TO STOP SOMETHING IN THE NEXT SEVERAL WEEKS IF IT STARTS UP AND IT'S OUT OF CONTROL AND THE VIOLATORS ARE REALLY VIOLATING THE ORDNANCE.
YEAH.
IT JUST MAYBE SOME WAY TO, YOU KNOW, STEP UP THE PRESSURE ON THEM USING, YOU KNOW, A DIFFERENT ENFORCEMENT.
YEAH. AND FOR ZONING, FOR REAL, THAT SORT OF NOISE LEVEL ENFORCEMENT TO BE IN ZONING, IT'S REALLY SUPPOSED TO BE A NOISE ORDNANCE THAT GOES THROUGH A CERTAIN PROCESS, IS APPROVED BY DEP WHICH WE DON'T HAVE. 2014, THERE WAS AN EFFORT BY SOME NEIGHBORS TO SORT OF REVISE OUR NOISE ORDNANCE, MAKE IT STRICKER AND IT DIDN'T HAVE ENOUGH POPULARITY, I GUESS, TO GO VERY FAR.
LIKE I SAID, THEY'RE VERY DIFFICULT BECAUSE WHAT WOULD REGULATE SOMETHING LIKE THIS MIGHT SHUT DOWN CERTAIN LAWNMowers FOR.
RIGHT. AND THEY'RE SUPPOSED TO BE DIFFICULT TO MEASURE. YOU KNOW, IT'S NOT LIKE A RADAR GUN, YOU HAVE TO BE REALLY TRAINED AT USING THE SORT OF NOISE MEASUREMENT TOOLS.
ANY OTHER PART OF DISCUSSIONS? WE'RE SITTING WAIT. GODN AND I PROBABLY WON'T BE HERE BUT ANYBODY WOULD SIT AND WAIT. OLD BUSINESS WE HAVE.
AND THE, WE RECOMMEND TABLEING THAT CAM APPLICATION ON CHIPITCHOG TRAIL UNTIL THE NEXT MEETING.
ALL RIGHT, BEN?
OK, PURSUE INTO THE GENERAL STATUTS OF THE STATE OF CONNECTICUT, REVISION OF 1958 AND ALL AMENDMENTS THERE TOO AND PURSUE INTO THE ZONING REGULATIONS FOR THE TOWN OF STONINGTON, CONNECTICUT, THE PLANNING AND ZONING COMMISSION HEREBY GIVES NOTICE THAT IT WILL HOLD A PUBLIC HEARING AT THE STONINGTON BOARD OF EDUCATION DISTRICT OFFICE, 40 FIELD STREET, PAUKETOK, CONNECTICUT ON TUESDAY, JUNE 22ND, 2021 AT 7 PM ON THE FOLLOWING APPLICATIONS. PZ 2112, SUP, PAPIS GROUP INC., G. ZECARIOLI, EXCUSE ME IF I PRONOUNCED THAT WRONG, SPECIAL USE PERMIT APPLICATION FOR THE RENOVATION OF EXISTING RESTAURANT AND TO PERMIT SIX OUTDOOR VENDORS, PROPERTY LOCATED AT 29 OLD STONINGTON ROAD, MYSTIC, SASSORS MAP 153, BLOCK 1, LOT 4, ZONE GC 60.
THE WAY WE RUN THE PUBLIC HEARING, THE APPLICANT WILL SPEAK FIRST AND THOSE IN FAVOR OF THE APPLICATION, THEN ANYONE APOUGHS TO THE APPLICATION, ANY GENERAL COMMENTS ON THE APPLICATION, THEN THE APPLICANT HAS THE RIGHT FOR REBUTAL. THE ALTERNATE MEMBERS OF THE COMMISSION HAVE A RIGHT TO ASK QUESTIONS DURING THE APPLICATION. THEY WILL NOT VOTE ON IT, VOTING ON IT, AS I SAID, TONIGHT ARE OUR FIVE REGULAR MEMBERS. SO WE WILL OPEN THE PUBLIC HEARING WITH SERGIO AGAIN AND AGAIN, WE'RE GOING TO SEE A LOT OF HIM TONIGHT.
GOOD EVENING AGAIN, MR. CHAIR, MEMBERS OF THE COMMISSION. ONCE AGAIN FOR THE RECORD, SERGIO TRENZIO WITH TRENZIAN ASSOCIATES. THIS EVENING, TONIGHT, FOR THIS APPLICATION, I AM HERE ON BEHALF OF GEORGE ZECARIOLI. THE PROPERTY OWNER IS THE PAPIS GROUP BUT GEORGE IS THE APPLICANT. HE IS ENGAGED IN A PURCHASE AND SALES ON THE PROPERTY AND IS LOOKING TO RENOVATE IT WITH SOME ADDITIONAL USES AS NOTED IN THE APPLICATION. ALSO HERE TONIGHT ON BEHALF OF THE APPLICANT, IF NECESSARY TO GIVE TESTIMONY, IS DR. MICHAEL SULO WHO IS THE PROJECT ARCHITECT. THERE'S NOT ANY REAL HEAVY RENOVATION TO THE OUTSIDE OF THE BUILDING, MOSTLY SOME PAINT AND GOD KNOWS THE PLACE NEEDS SOME UPDATING BUT MOST OF IT IS GOING TO BE SOME INTERIOR RENOVATION WORK AND DR. SULO IS HERE IF THERE'S ANY QUESTIONS REGARDING THAT. AND ALSO I BELIEVE AL, ATTORNEY AL SPECIALE IS HERE IN CASE THERE'S ANY LEGAL QUESTIONS THAT I CAN'T ANSWER. SO AS THE APPLICATION STATES, THE PROPERTY LOCATED, I HAVE THE TOWN GIS MAP UP AT 29 OLD STONINGTON ROAD. MOST OF YOU AFFACTIONALLY KNOW THE OLD RESTAURANT AS THE OLD SAILOR ED'S RESTAURANT. SINCE THEN IT'S CHANGED HANDS, NOT SURE HOW MANY TIMES BUT MOST, I THINK, GOSH, MAYBE 10, 15 YEARS AGO IT WAS THE TONGUE AND GROOVE. I THINK IT WAS MAYBE A LESS DESIRABLE RESTAURANT NIGHTCLUB IN THAT LOCATION AND IT'S BEEN SITTING PRETTY MUCH VACANT SINCE THEN AS EXHIBITED BY A LOT OF THE CRACK PAINTMENT WITH GRASS GOING THROUGH, BEING FENCED OFF AND SOME OF THE OVERGROWN AND JUST OVERALL JUST BEEN NEGLECTED FOR SOME TIME NOW. JUST A LITTLE BIT OF HISTORY ON THE PROPERTY. AS I INDICATED, IT WAS THE OLD SAILOR ED'S RESTAURANT. THAT WAS A 180 SEAT RESTAURANT AT THE TIME AND IN 1982. IN 1982, THE OWNER AT THE TIME OBTAINED A SPECIAL USE PERMIT TO ADD A 100 SEAT BANQUET FACILITY. SO THIS BUILDING AT ONE POINT IN THE PAST IN CONTINUATION WITH THE SPECIAL USE PERMIT WAS APPROVED FOR BASICALLY A 280 SEAT RESTAURANT, 100 OF THEM BEING BANQUET WITH THE, I BELIEVE WITH UNDER THE IMPRESSION THAT NOT BOTH WOULD OPERATE AT THE SAME TIME BUT STILL WERE APPROVED WITH THAT AMOUNT OF CAPACITY. SUBSEQUENTLY, IN 1992, THERE WAS A MODIFICATION TO THE SPECIAL USE PERMIT TO EXPAND A FRONT DECK AREA WHICH I WILL SHOW YOU ON THE SITE PLAN. EXCUSE ME, 1992 WAS WHAT TO EXPAND AN ENTRANCE AREA, IT WAS AN ADDITION TO THE ENTRANCE. AND THEN IN 1998, THERE WAS AN EXPANSION FOR AN OUTSIDE DECK IN THE FRONT OF THE BUILDING WHICH I WILL IDENTIFY ON THE SITE PLAN WHEN WE GET TO THAT. JUST TO GIVE YOU SOME CONTEXT, THE SITE'S LOCATED ON THE NORTH SIDE OF OLD STONINGTON ROAD TO THE SOUTH, I THINK YOU ALL ARE FAMILIAR WITH THE DENSMORE PROPERTY, DENSMORE OIL PROPERTY WHICH YOUR COMMISSION I BELIEVE APPROVED A NEW DEVELOPMENT THERE THAT WILL, I BELIEVE, MAYBE BE SUDDENLY UNDER CONSTRUCTION.
WE HAVEN'T DONE IT YET.
YOU HAVE, HAVE NOT BEEN, MY APPOLIES, HAS NOT BEEN APPROVED YET BUT I BELIEVE THERE IS A PROPOSAL FOR SOME WORK ON THAT, ON THE SOUTH SIDE OF OLD STONINGTON ROAD DIRECTLY ADJACENT ACROSS THE ROAD FROM THE SUBJECT PARCEL. YOU'RE ALL FAMILIAR WITH THE DOG WATCH BARBECUE RESTAURANT TO THE SOUTHWEST. THE MYSTIC, I THINK IT'S THE FLOORING COMPANY TO THE NORTHWEST WHICH IS ALSO A MIXED USE WITH RESIDENTIAL NOW. AND THEN THE PROPERTY TO THE EAST OF, NORTH AND EAST LARGELY ARE WETLAND TITLE AND A PORTION OF WHICH ARE INLAND WETLANDS THAT ARE ON THE SUBJECT PROPERTY WHICH I WILL ALSO SHOW ON THE SITE PLAN. RESIDENTIALLY ZONED PROPERTY BUT MOSTLY WET, NOT MUCH UPLAND ASSOCIATED WITH THOSE AND I THINK SUBJECT TO AN EASEMENT BY THE TOWN. AND THEN LASTLY, TO THE SOUTHEAST, THE QUANBOG FIRE STATION. SO AT THIS TIME, LET ME, I'LL PULL UP THE SITE PLAN AND I'LL SPEAK TO THAT, JUST GIVE ME ONE MINUTE PLEASE. IT'S A LITTLE BIT WASHED OUT BUT I'LL ZOOM IN AND OUT AS I SPEAK TO EACH ONE OF THE SO I MENTIONED A LITTLE BIT OF THE HISTORY THAT IT WAS A RESTAURANT. WE'RE STILL MAINTAINING THAT SPECIAL USE PERMIT FOR THE USE OF THE RESTAURANT BUT WE'RE ADDING TWO OTHER USES OR ACTUALLY THREE OTHER USES. THE REASON FOR THE SPECIAL USE PERMIT THIS EVENING IS FOR THE OUTDOOR VENDORS LOCATED ON THE EASTERN PORTION OF THE PROPERTY. THE OTHER TWO USES WHICH WILL BE RENOVATED, INTERIOR TO THE STRUCTURE IS RETAIL RESTAURANT WILL TAKE THE FORM OF AN ICE CREAM SHOP WITH A, YOU KNOW, WALKUP TAKEOUT WINDOW, SOME ADDITIONAL RETAIL SPACE INTERIOR TO THE BUILDING AS WELL AND THEN THE BALANCE OF THE BUILDING WILL BE A 100 SEAT RESTAURANT. I WANTED TO MAKE SURE IT'S IMPORTANT TO NOTE THAT THE AREA WHICH THE RESTAURANT WILL BE, WILL BE ON THE EASTERN PORTION OF THE BUILDING. IN THIS AREA, THE RETAIL MORE CENTRAL IN THIS PORTION OF THE BUILDING AND THEN THE ICE CREAM SHOP IS CURRENTLY PROPOSED ON THIS CORNER. AND THEN THE OUTSIDE VENDORS OVER IN THIS SPACE HERE.
CAN I ASK YOU WHAT SORT OF VENDORS?
Can I ask you what, what sort of vendors, what, what are they, what's expected here?
My client, George, is here, but I think he's been speaking with folks that will do either some kind of selling crafts, that types of tech, type wares, artisan crafts, and possibly maybe a farmer's market type, type use, but there's only, we can only fit two on, on the site, and I'll get into why that is in a little bit here. The property is zone, general commercial, retail and retail restaurant, what your, your code calls a retail restaurant, are both uses that are, that are approved by site plan approval and the restaurant requiring a special use permit, but my understanding is a continued use, so it's not the subject of this application, although it's part of it, and it's really the outside vendors that are required by special, special use permit. As I mentioned, there are title and inland wetlands. You can see along the, the edge here, there's the, there's the blue line, but then there's one that, that juts out. So there's a pocket of, of inland wetlands here, adjacent to a title wetland that meant, then they, they kind of join up as they get closer to the road. So you'll notice that we have a 100-foot upland review area, similar to the previous application or pre-application I presented. And we'll be remaining outside of that with any of our proposed site development. You will notice that there are some things that we are proposing within that 100-foot. However, they are historical uses. These, this area here are some tanks that were used historically for the septic, which will no longer be needed, and they are being removed. And as such, the area that around them is going to be cleared for, it's actually overgrown area, there's actually pavement underneath there that'll be cleared and reutilized as it had been in prior. The only other item to note, next to the building, is a dumpster which is going to be placed on a paved surface. There's no additional development per se that's required, it's just a dumpster and being screened as required by your regulations. So as such, we believe that we are exempt from your, because it's, this is a, a minor, a relatively minor development, mostly going to be renovating existing pavement areas, and most of the work is being taken place inside. We've established that, we believe that we're, we're exempt from a CAM application, but also that we are, we also do not need a wetlands, any wetlands approval as qualified by the Wetlands Enforcement Officer. The proposed uses will require that we have adequate parking on the site. Part of the approval in 1982 was the, this area in the rear was actually all cleared at one time and approved under the 1982 special use permit for gravel parking. Over the years, it has been overgrown. If you visit the site, it's overtaken with Russian olive and other invasives and wild vegetation, but we are proposing to recover some of that area that is outside the 100-foot upland review area. And if you, if, my client has told me, as he's gone out here and started to clear on this fringe, there's still gravel underneath there, and we're going to reutilize that for some additional parking space. It's important to note, we were very cognizant of the fact that there's, that Stonington Road has been subject to a lot of overflow parking from, from the Dog Watch Restaurant, to the point where the, the owner had to put a fence up so that people did not park in his parking lot for liability issues. And we recognize that that is still going to happen. We've actually met with the police commission and the police chief, and their advice to us was, please talk to your neighbors. We don't want to police the matter. If you can, please take it upon yourselves to try to work together so that parking does not become an issue and, and flood up, up to Lamb's Way and some of the residential property, which it encroaches pretty close to now with the Dog Watch, the, the people that park at Dog Watch. So we, we heard that, we're cognizant of it, and even though that we could potentially, you know, fight for more capacity in this restaurant, given the, the grandfathered use of the special use permits, my client has, I think graciously, taken a step back and said, okay, I just want to do 100-seat restaurant. What can I get in addition to that? And we've run a parking calculation, and we can meet all of the parking requirements. At 100-seat restaurant, one space per three seats, 34 spaces required, assuming 12 employees, one per employee, and five spaces for the outdoor vendors at two vendors is an additional 10. So, oh, plus the, the retail space requiring 28 spaces based on one space per 200 square feet. So we are, I believe that the, the site boasted over 100 spaces at one point, but after we kind of take into account what realistically we can get in there, I think some of it encroached into the, some of it encroached into the right-of-way, which we're pulling everything back to the property line, kind of rectifying those, those things that have kind of migrated over time, and we've gotten, we're able to accommodate, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 85, 86 spaces to, that will accommodate everything per the regulations for the minimum parking requirements for these uses on site. So I think it's very important to note that we're working within the site constraints and the use to make sure that we, we can allocate all of our parking interior to our site, and we do not need to rely on off-street parking to exasperate, exacerbate that issue. Excuse me.
Anyone have any questions at this time?
I have, I have a few more things to.
I'd like to ask him.
That's fine, yeah, just go right ahead.
Anyone have any questions at this time?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, Ben.
What is the monitoring well, and why is it there?
I, I don't know why that's there. I, um, I.
We don't know why it was installed, or?
I do not, no.
Is it active?
I don't know if, George, do you have any idea why that's there? No, I don't. Do you know whereabouts that monitoring well is?
According to your drawing, it's, yeah, it's, it's on your drawing.
There's a monitoring well in the front? Yeah, I, we did not, we did not investigate what that was.
It's in the corner. Okay.
That's a question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. George?
Finish floor elevation, is it, is it a single elevation for the entire structure?
Yes, I believe so.
Any idea what the floor elevation?
There's no changes in elevation. I don't off the top of my head, no. I don't know what that elevation is.
It seems to me that this would be very low and close to the floodplain zone, is it not?
Oh, it's, it's in the flood zone, absolutely.
So it's in the flood zone, and any idea of the frequency of flooding of, of the structure?
I don't, I don't have any.
Or the history, no?
No, but I can address flood if you'd like.
I saw the, the chit-chat back and forth with the town engineer and, and others about whether this is a substantial modification or not. Has that been resolved?
No, we do not believe it's going to be a substantial, we have no intentions of it being a substantial modification, being the, over the 50% value of the structure.
Okay, so it remains below 50% all the renovations? Okay.
Yeah, and, and we will qualify that with the building official prior to construction, and if there's an issue with, with that, it'll have to come back for, for this commission.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does that 50% include any of the lot changes to the parking lot, et cetera, that's excluded?
Just building permitting.
So Sergio, can you just tell me how you calculated the parking for the drive-through or drive-up ice cream?
It's, first point of clarification, it's not a drive-up, it's just a take-out window. So it's.
Okay.
People will park and then walk up to the window similarly if they, when they go to Dairy Queen.
Okay, so how did you, I'm, I'm sure you're going to be very successful, and you might have 30 people in line, the way it is in Dairy Queen and Sea Swirl, where there's no parking, et cetera, et cetera. So how did you account for that when it came to parking?
I believe we just, we lumped it in with the retail, because it's a retail restaurant.
Uh huh.
So it's one per 200 square feet.
And how, how many square feet is the ice cream?
800.
So, so it's four parking spots for the ice cream?
I'd, I'd have to check, but that sounds about right.
And then, can you just explain to me where you said, if you kind of zoomed out of your, you highlighted these, I think you plan on making them spaces where there's something else there now, tanks, did you say? It was right there, right there.
Right here.
What's, what's the story there?
So those historically were old septic tanks. They're no longer needed because we're going to be, the, the building is tied into.
Right, right.
To public sewer.
Mm-hmm.
So those tanks have just been left there, and they don't do anything. So they've, they're going to be pumped out, removed, and that area will be reclaimed for parking.
Reclaimed for parking?
Correct.
So do you have any documentation that that was originally for parking? I mean, I know you're saying that there's gravel underneath, but, you know, I mean, I'm sure they probably put gravel because of tank, you know, I, how, how does that work?
There's an approved special use permit that shows it on the site plan.
That it was supposed to be parking and just whoever it was decided not to use it for parking?
Well, parking over the tanks.
Parking over the tanks, okay.
I think I have a copy of that plan, if you, if you wanted to see it.
But you were, you were reduced the number of vendors to two.
Originally, my client wanted to do 20 vendors, but your, the, the zoning regulations are so restrictive on, on, on the area dedicated to each, you need a thousand square feet per vendor. To put in perspective, these tents are probably going to be 10 by 10, that's 100 square feet, and you require, your regulations require 1,000.
We're tough.
All right, no, I know why they're written that way. It was to be prohibited, but yes, we went from 20 down to six, and now we're down to two.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And those vendors are located in an area just off the, just off the parking, actually just on the edge of the parking, and then, I can also present you, there's a landscaping plan which, which creates a landscape buffer along the westerly property line.
How, how do you propose to protect the vendors from, from the vehicles?
So there's stanchions that'll go up. You can see here, there's a note, stanchions for safety, for pedestrian safety.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, we'll line those around, because these will be temporarily taken up and down just on weekends. And I do have a request, before I forget, of this commission, our application request Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, and my client would like to expand that to Fridays if, if, if it so pleases the, the commission, if they would entertain that this evening. But these tents, they're fireproof, or they, they will, they'll have to be fireproof. They'll be portable, taken up and down only to be used when they are allotted, during the allotted times, as well as the stanchions to protect the pedestrians.
And I believe it was from nine o'clock in the morning until what time at night? Or sundown, whatever came first?
Sundown.
Yeah.
It was till six or sundown, whichever came first.
Yeah, during the summer months, I'm sure they want to stay out until the sun goes down, so. But those hours don't change. We just respectfully request that, that Friday is added to that, to the, to that, to that request or that condition.
Continue, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay, anytime. The, the utilities, as I touched upon, the septic tanks won't be needed anymore. It is tied into a public sewer. We have had correspondence with Doug Nettleton, Director of the Water Pollution Control Authority. Doug has indicated that because there is, because the, the site was abandoned for such a long time that the, the usage, originally, he was concerned to bring it back online, especially with the moratorium, hopefully pending, that, that'll be eliminated soon. But his most recent correspondence, I believe, he said he would entertain allowing a tie-in because of the reduction in the intensity of use from when it was previously operated with 100-seat banquet facility and a 180-seat restaurant. I did want to get a point of clarification on that, I don't know if now's the appropriate time. Keith, I believe that you had conditioned that it was, it was contingent upon the moratorium being lifted for, for a sewer tie-in, but I'm not sure if that's what Mr. Nettleton's letter specifically identified. It could have been an interpretation on my part.
I think I would change the stipulation to maybe subject, because I think it was a little unclear to me also.
Thank you. If, if Mr. Nettleton requires it be held up, held by the moratorium, then that would be fine, but if, if it's not, we don't want it to be written in the record as such, or stipulated as such. The property was also served by a private well at one point, and we will be seeking to be tying into the public water utility that's available. Also to add to Mr. Nettleton's comments, considering it is a restaurant, we will have to install a grease trap prior to discharge to the town sewer, so we are perfectly fine with that, even if it is stipulated, but we will, we'll be coordinating with the, with the Water Pollution Control Authority for that.
And you said you had a landscape plan?
I do. I was going to actually bring that up next, if you can just give me one moment. Sorry, it'll just take a second to load up.
It is in the package drawings we got this evening. It's the second, second sheet in L 1002, and the drawings we received this evening. The landscape plan also. We want to get a closer look at it.
Thanks, Chuck.
L 1002.
So the landscape plan, as you all know, the, the landscape is pretty unruly there right now, so my client did engage landscape architect, Rebecca Nolan is here this evening, if you have any questions for her. But basically, landscaping is going to take place in the areas that are currently landscaped, they're just going to be improved with new plantings as the other ones have been significantly overgrown. So that will, those, the landscaping will be, you know, in front of the building, in the, in the planting beds that are there, some additional plantings along the east. There's mostly existing vegetation. There's also a lot of, lot of vegetation to the rear of the property, which we're not going to touch, with the exception of the expansion of the, the previous parking area that we're going to be reclaiming. Mostly, we wanted to make sure that we, we respected a, a buffer with the neighbor to the west and put some additional trees in there, especially, you know, around these vendors, so that those areas, the parking areas, the vendor areas, had a, had a screening buffer, so.
What, what type of trees? It just says trees.
There's a, there is a planting list, and like, Ms. Nolan is here if you.
I see, okay, I see the list, okay.
Ms. Nolan is here if you want to get some specifics.
No, I didn't see the next page, that's fine.
I could read some off to you.
Is there going to be any, I don't see any lighting involved here. Parking lot lighting or signage lighting?
We did not submit a lighting plan, but as a condition of this approval, it'll be minimal downlighting, all dark sky compliant. I do have a photometric plan, which identifies that everything will be, meet all the foot candles, minimum required, so that there won't be any light shed on adjacent parcels.
There's going to be three street lights or two parking lot lights?
I can pull that up, hold on one sec. Might just take another second, sorry.
But Ben, can I just interrupt for a minute? Are, are you proposing any kind of, of landscaping along the road?
Uh, yes.
I'm, I'm seeing it just right next to the building in the front. Am I missing anything?
Yes. Yes, there is some landscaping proposed by the road, yes. There's minimum, there's minimal islands there, but, uh, without, there, there are some trees that we're proposing along the road as long as, as well as some shrubs.
Yeah.
Right there?
Yeah.
Uh, there's a, a ground, ground cover seed.
You can't read it, I know it's small.
A mow strip that would, you know, serve as the, uh, kind of a snow shelf. There is a, there's, there's kind of a makeshift sidewalk there. There's a bituminous curb that's been pretty much destroyed by plows.
Excuse me, there is no sidewalk there.
There's not a raised sidewalk, but there's a where, there's an area where you can walk along. There's a curb where you, I can show you the, um.
I, I know it quite well.
Yeah. There's an area that you can walk along there. I wouldn't know if you've billed it as a sidewalk, you're right.
No. And half the time, people jump the curb and park half in the street, you know, half on the street and half in that walkable area.
Well, we're replacing that, that curb that's, that's, that's been destroyed there.
The berm will come out?
I'm sorry?
That berm will come out.
I'm not sure I understand what, which, which berm.
The berm, there's a, there's a bituminous curbing, if you will, it's a berm, yeah.
Well, we have to formalize the entrances, so the curb will, that, that bituminous curb will go back in.
It will.
Yeah.
Where it's located now.
Correct.
And get backfilled and form a curb rather than a berm.
Um, we, we can, yeah, if, if that's desirable, yep.
Why wouldn't you just put a regular sidewalk?
I don't think there's a sidewalk that, I don't think it goes anywhere, but if.
But you're going to have, I mean.
Sidewalk.
We can, it's something we can consider.
That road is, a lot of people on that road.
Yes, I have a question just to carry out, and maybe you're going to get to it later on in the presentation, and I'm kind of curious with how this is going to impact the traffic around that area, because it's already pretty packed with, you know, dog watch, we all see that. So I just want to know if you've taken into consideration the amount of additional traffic, you know, from the parking lot going onto that road, coming on to, to one, you know, that, that can get pretty packed up even now, so I just wonder if you've taken that into consideration.
Um, so when you say traffic, you're concerned of the, the number of patrons that are going to be coming in and out?
Yeah, there's a number of people coming onto that road and then going back onto Route One. Because there's really only that one.
Well, I mean, just, just want to make sure everyone's clear.
To the left over there, coming, yeah.
So there's, there's two-way traffic at the northerly entrance, but there's only one-way traffic, I believe, in, at, at the southerly entrance. We, we haven't done a traffic impact study. Uh, it was historically used as a restaurant. It's been out of use for so long, but, uh, that's one of the waivers we're, we're pretty much requesting, I believe.
How long, it's been out of use for 15 years, did you say, Sergio?
I would say between 10 and 15 years was the last time it was used. Whenever Tongue and Groove, I think, was the last thing, the last, last thing there.
And, and the dog watch, uh, which generates a lot of that traffic, certainly hasn't been there since that restaurant, so, um, you know, I think a lot has changed.
Agreed. But no, we haven't conducted a, a traffic study of how many trips that this would generate, uh, because it has a historical use.
One thing I note on the plan in regard to his question, to Ryan's question, is that, that you are channelizing the two driveways.
Correct.
And I think one of the, the problems associated with this site that I've observed is it's one monstrous curb cut, and people are cutting all over the place now. And that channelization, I think, will have a very positive impact on, on, uh, the entire traffic flow in, in, in that area. I think that's one very positive improvement that you're making.
And if I may, I mean, this, having a vacant parcel like this, uh, is not desirable, I would think, in any community. Uh, Mr. Sacaroli will be a steward to this property. He's going to maintain it and take care of it where it's in very much disrepair, and, uh, just having someone there to monitor traffic and things like that, and people coming in and out, um, just having a presence there, you know, will bring people off the street. It'll create additional areas for parking. Who knows, if he seeks, meets an agreement with his neighbor, maybe that they have some kind of collaboration where if people park there, can go back and forth to the amenities, the retail spaces, as well as dog watch, and then go grab an ice cream. Uh, it may be, so there might be some synergy there. At least we hope.
Mr. Chairman, a question about water supply. Has there been any dialogue with the water authority on the new connection?
Uh, no, there hasn't. I believe this is, uh, under, I think this is Aquarian Water Company.
They have plenty of capacity to handle.
Yeah, have you, George, have you talked to the water company? Have they indicated if they have capacity? Yeah, they've had the, we started this company.
And there's no fire suppression in the existing building, so is there no fire suppression in the new building?
Uh, there is no fire suppression in the building, and we've met with the fire marshal, George Brennan. He's indicated as long as, um, it is built out appropriately, uh, with the appropriate firewalls between the, uh, different tenant uses, that, uh, potentially will not need fire sprinkler. Uh, with, if possible, it's, it's, it's a pretty significant expense, but if it needs to happen, it will, we will have to do it.
It could trip that 50%, and fire suppression could definitely trip that 50%.
Very well could, uh, but our plan right now is to hopefully not do that.
Be interesting to know if they could even handle the demand without jockey pumps and storage. I'm sure that that would be required.
Um, and we'd happy to condition the approval on such, uh, that we'd have to get, uh, that, that approval from the water company.
Do you intend to have any outdoor seating, dining?
So, uh, I did allude to the outdoor seating that is more or less grandfathered in. I'm sorry, that's the lighting plan, we can get back to that. So there is, uh, this was the approved patio, uh, that was subject to the 1998 special use permit. Uh, my client would like to reserve the right to, uh, have that patio there, should he so choose. Right now, I don't think it's there, um, but that would be the limit of the outside seating.
Yeah, I don't remember it ever being utilized.
I don't know if it ever was. Um, it's definitely not there now, but it was, uh, part of a special use permit.
Would there be any outside entertainment, live entertainment?
It's stipulated in that special use permit that outside entertainment is not allowed, so we would have to carry through with that as well.
Would you mind saying that one more time for me?
There will be no. There will be no outside entertainment. Um, but I will add, I think the stipulation does identify, I need to put this on record because it is in there, I believe that it does allow for dining music.
Indoors?
Outside, uh, Keith, I, I don't know if it's in the.
I'd like to get that clarified.
The actuals, the actual stipulation of the previous approval said, I believe that you're allowed to have, you know, outside dining music at a ambient level or some.
I didn't understand at all what that meant.
It's those canned things we use, listen to in elevators.
Elevator music ambiance, I, I would assume. No live amplified music.
Okay, one more time, no live.
No live amplified music.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
If I could just circle back, Mr. Chairman, on the last point, I have to beat it to the, uh, the fire suppression. If, if it goes the other way, and in the event you do have to provide fire suppression, those tanks would be underground, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we would do that.
Well, it's on the, it's on the municipal water.
Well, he's talked to the fire marshal, but they've got to go through the building permit process.
Yeah.
Correct.
And if they can meet the fire rating between occupied spaces, they can probably do so large temper structure. And it's a challenge to, to rehab a structure like this without fire suppression. I, I'm not saying they can't do it, they probably can't, uh, you know, but, but I'm sure it'll be at least a two-hour rating between each use.
Correct.
And, uh, and, and that's not, it's not easy to achieve when you've got ceilings and, and hip roofs and everything, so. So in the event, I just want to make sure that in the event that, that it goes to a situation where fire suppression is required, that we don't have above-ground storage tanks added to everything else that's going on in the site, those tanks would be underground. And, uh, that's the only, only point I wanted to make. I, I think you've got it under control.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's pretty, thank you, Sergio.
I did just want to start, sorry, I did just want to circle back, Ben, to the sign. Um, what, what is your thought there?
For signage?
Mm-hmm.
Are you talking, um, are you, are you talking about?
Any.
Traffic signage or?
Any advert, you know.
Just for, to advertise business?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there's a condition in your, that your, uh, that Keith has put together that any multi-tenant signs will have to come back to this commission. The only rights to signs they have is the existing one on the property.
You are? Our regulations say that when you have a multi-tenant building with a lot of commercial businesses in it, with a lot of different signs, that can often be difficult to figure out how much signage is allowed where. So our regulations have this, uh, multi-tenant, multi-tenant signage program in which someone can come before you and say, this is how we're going to divvy up all the allowed signage on the wall. So that was one of the recommended stipulations here, is that a multi-tenant signage program shall be approved by the commission prior to issuance of sign permits other than the restaurant. Because the restaurant's always been there, it's entitled to that big sign that's on the street there. But when they come back to have lots of different signs, either on the wall or for that detached sign, because, you know, they have the big one on the street, they're only allowed to have one detached sign on the property. So they could take that big sign and advertise all the businesses on that one sign. And that would be part of this program too, so. Other than the restaurant, they'll be back before you.
This may be helpful.
Anything else, Sergio, or go to any other sites?
There's an, there's an existing sign, you can see everything growing up around it. Um, that'll all be, you know, cleaned up, taken down, and some landscaping, but that's, that's the old sign that they would utilize.
Did we ever see a lighting plan?
No, but I was going to circle back to that, because you had made that comment, Mr. Philbrick.
That shows you the monster curb cut that we were talking about too, that it's uncontrolled access along the entire panorama of the front there, which is, from a traffic perspective, a nightmare.
This is the area where that, this is the, this is the, the curb cut here where it should be. All this curbing has been taken out, which will be reestablished.
Now, the way, the way, that's at least what I looked at today.
So what I was referring to, Mr. Philbrick, was there's a, there is kind of a, an area to walk behind, but then it's thwarted by this vegetation here, but, um, I think before this fence was up, people parked all the way, and, and this is within the town right-of-way there.
So is that what you were referring to when you said sidewalk?
We're gonna.
From the curb to the fence?
Well, we're going to reestablish this curb, and then there is an area through here along this fence.
What you're, you're referring.
It's not a raised sidewalk, but there is an area to.
A walkway.
To walk, I would, I guess.
And are you maintaining that?
Um, well, it's by virtue of the fact that it's, it's, I'll go back to the site plan.
You know, the reason I'm, I'm just harping on this a little bit is because I, I do understand what you're saying. It would, it would hopefully be that people would be crossing the street from dog watch over to the ice cream place. I mean, that's, that's really probably part of your business plan, right? And there's going to be traffic, as you said, as you said, you can only go out in one way or out one way. And so it would be nice if there was a place that people knew that they could walk on safely. That's what I'm saying.
I, I believe that this area would remain clear. It's actually in the town right-of-way. Um, and the parking actually went up to just that curb. Um, if you see some of the old aerials, uh, which, if you don't mind if I bring those up. If you go back to the aerials from, let's see, it's pretty interesting. You can see the pavement here has a different color, and there's like half-spaces. Because this, the park, the cars parked into the right-of-way along the curb. But technically, I don't think we're allowed to park in a town right-of-way that way, so we're, we've modified the site plan to pull the parking back, and I apologize if this wasn't clear, so that people don't park in this area, and it actually could be a haven for, for a walkway.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Um, and with that, I would like to go back to the, the lighting plan. This is a photometric plan. Sorry, it's, uh, maybe a little difficult to read, but basically, if anyone of you have read a photometric plan, these numbers represent foot candles. I know they're very difficult to read at this scale, but basically, we are showing, um, lighting poles, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, around the parking lot, seven, eight. So this would not be the final, uh, photometric plan, but, uh, it is a condition of the approval that, uh, this is administratively approved by your, your staff before it goes forward, and all the lights will be full cutoff, um, dark sky compliant, and don't shed any light beyond, uh, the property, or, or the areas actually of the parking area, just for safety and security. Um, if there's any stipulations that you want to put on as far as when those lights can be on or off, I know that's often a thing that you're concerned with, light pollution and, and people seeing lights off of Route One, um, we'd be happy to condition that as well.
And how about lights coming off of the building itself?
Um, we don't show any as part of this photometric plan. Uh, if anything, uh, George, do you know if there's any lights on the building right now? Yeah, I mean, that, I, I would assume that they're, um, very low lighting, just to, to guide entrances around the building. Very understated.
Thank you.
That it, Sergio, for now?
Unless there's any other questions, uh, yeah, I think, I think I've covered mostly everything.
Anyone else, I'd like to speak in favor of this application. Is anyone opposed to this application? What, are you opposed? In favor? You're, you're sleeping?
Not yet. Uh, 30 minutes till bedtime. Hi, everybody. Uh, Dave Hammond. I'm the Chair of the EDC, and I live at, on Green Haven Road in Parketuck. So the, uh, Sergio came before the EDC representing, uh, the applicant and spoke to us about this proposal. Uh, the EDC felt that having, you know, something, having the lights on in this building is much preferable to having the building falling down and deteriorating. And the proposed uses helped to diversify the income stream to, uh, to help assure the viability of the business, so, uh, the EDC is in favor of the proposed project.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Anyone opposed to this application? Anyone speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Any general comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ben Tamsky, Five Edge Mountain Street in Mystic. Excuse me. Um, another 100-seat restaurant in Mystic, uh, pre-existing, obviously, but there's been a lot of seats added in the meantime, uh, throughout town. Get the parking right. I would ask how the number of employees will be verified. The applicant has stated 12 employees for the restaurant. I don't know what that's based on, but I think that the, uh, town should be able to count employees when they operate, when the restaurant is actually under operation, in operation, to verify that number. Uh, because that doesn't have a big impact on the parking. And the sidewalk, I think you should require a real sidewalk there. There are other uses on the street. It's a, it's a good precedent to set for, for new development in downtown Mystic or near downtown Mystic. Not just a curb with a road on both sides, but an actual raised sidewalk. Thank you.
Any other general comments? Sergio, you have any rebuttal?
Um, no, I don't, I don't have any comments on that, but if there's additional things that the commission, um, has, we'd be happy to address. Um, I just wanted to clarify, I, I misspoke, um, I believe. Just want to make sure I'm reading this correct. Uh, yeah, stipulation number one of the, the patio, which we would uphold, is no music live or otherwise shall be allowed on the deck. So I, I just wanted to make sure I clarified that for you.
So Sergio, uh, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, go right ahead.
It's, it's getting back to the parking, I was trying to do a little calculation. So 12 employees for a 100-seat restaurant. You want to tell me how you got that number?
No, I, I. No, I don't have a justification for it. I would have to talk to someone who runs a restaurant, or historically what you've approved, I know you've approved less for larger restaurants. Take Bravo, for example. I'm pretty sure that parking calculation for as many, as much business as they do, I'm pretty sure it's pretty comparable. If it's not, I'd be entertained another...
But not there at the same time.
I'm sorry?
Employees aren't there all at the same time.
No, that's the highest shift, 12 employees. But if there's a number that is in mind, I don't, admittedly, I'm not sure what that number would be for a 100-seat restaurant. The only thing I could offer is if there are more employees at the largest shift for the restaurant, we could adjust the number of how many seats that would be allowed. So if they required 15, or for every three, so for every three seats, we would have to adjust the parking for one more employee. Every employee that detracts three seats from the calculation. So if that's something that we want to revisit, or something staff can enforce, then we would have to just simply reduce the amount of seats to accommodate that.
Are there not industry standards that we could refer to that would tell us generally how many employees it takes to run a restaurant like that?
It really depends on the type of restaurant, and I don't know if, I know George has some thoughts on what type of restaurant it would be. Some restaurants require very few employees, if it's not a full service, if you're going up. But the type of restaurant that he would do, probably lunch and dinner, something comparable to, you know, a Bravo. But you take something like the Grass and Bone, or what used to be the M-Bar is, I mean, that's, you don't need as many people because you're getting your own food and taking it and sitting down. So without knowing the type of, the exact type of restaurant, I can't really identify how many employees you'd really need to operate such, for such. If it feels light to the commission, we would offer up that we would reduce the number of seats, or do some kind of adjustment to add more employees.
Well, I think, at least in my case, we just don't know.
Yeah.
We don't have anything to base that on. And so I guess we'd look to the applicant to tell us, doesn't have to tell us what's on the menu necessarily, but what kind of restaurant and what the going standard is for, how many people it takes to serve that kind of, that kind of an establishment.
Unfortunately, I don't have that information at my fingertips. I could Google search it right now, if you wanted me to. We might get some assimilation of what that would, that number would be, but seeing that George doesn't have, I don't think he's secured a tenant yet, he's not sure what type of restaurant it would be, so it could vary.
Oh, so this is not the applicant running the restaurant? This is a...
No, my client is going to run the, he's going to own and tenant, bring tenants into the building. And he has a good idea of who may be the restaurant, but I'm not at liberty to say, because it hasn't been secured yet. It could change.
So you'd be willing to make a stipulation that if 12 is not adequate, that you would do a comparable reduction in the size of the...
We would adjust the number of seats to a regulated, acceptable, if you're comfortable that to be held unadministratively, or if it so pleases the board, we could come back and say, "Hey, here's the restaurant. We've talked to the restaurateur. They know how many people they need to run their restaurant, and this is it."
I'm just looking at ITE here on the computer, that's a traffic standard. And it varies, you know, whether it's fine dining or lesser. But they're saying one server for like every seven tables, and approximately five back-of-house staff for 50 customers is a good ratio. So you might be pressing the upper limit of that 12 employees a little bit, because you've got 100, you know, 100 seats, so that would be...
Ten.
That's almost...
That's ten for the kitchen.
That's ten just in the back of the house, that doesn't leave any staff.
And a couple of servers, and you're probably actually very close to being within the ITE standard.
Yeah, but they're going by tables, not by people.
But it does say that it varies based on whether it's casual or fine dining. So your idea of perhaps reducing the number of seats, if based on some standard, you know, the number of employees is actually larger than what you've estimated in the parking calculation table. But it appears to be pretty close, based on, and ITE is the standard that everybody uses.
Of the number of tables. So my point is this, who's going to monitor? Keith, are you going to go and you're going to monitor the number of employees that they have in the back and the front of a restaurant? How often are you going to do that? And then, how, what are you going to take away the permit, reduce it? I'm just, you know, I guess this is for discussion, but I'm a little disappointed in the analysis for the parking. I'll just say that.
We could have taken a five-minute break.
Do you need to?
I know the church is waiting. I could get a glass of water, I gotta find a water fountain. I forgot my water.
Oh, I think...
I got some in the car.
I think they have water fountains here.
Yeah, there is a water fountain.
You saw it?
Yeah. You got a...
There's a break there.
I have some iced tea, but I drink that.
I got a bottle in the car, I just have to go get it.
Can we take a break? Will I take a break before we have discussions?
Yeah, so I think it stands to say that if there's an adjustment to the parking, as I mentioned, you can, we can stipulate it based on the type of restaurant. Unfortunately, we just don't know what that restaurant is right now to give you a definitive number of employees. I will add, we don't want to exacerbate, as I intended, we don't want to exacerbate the issue with the parking off-street, but parking off-street is still public, and we're entitled to it just as much as anyone else in the public. So there is additional parking off-street that can be used by either patrons. We probably wouldn't park our employees there, usually employees will park in the back. The only other thing that I've experienced is that a lot of employees, some of them carpool or get dropped off, depending on their shifts, or they park somewhere else and get shuttled in. I know you can't stipulate those types of things, but they're real opportunities. But I think the most practical matter would be to adjust the parking calculation with respect to the number of seats. That would keep it secluded just to the restaurant, so that the number of seats versus the waitstaff and back-of-the-house, you balance those two things out based on the type of restaurant it is.
And let me say, after dealing with this regulation for years, that it's sort of a terrible, terrible regulation for all the reasons we're talking about. Restaurants have to know before they even open up how many employees they're going to have. A restaurant potentially can't hire more people when they need to hire more people to provide better service for customers. So if held to the letter of the law, it could lead to this sort of downward spiral of a restaurant not being able to provide good customer service. And I know the rule is what it is, that's just my frustration with the regulation.
Well, okay, but Chuck has pointed out that as a general standard, 12's about right.
Yeah, 12's about right.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can sit here and make a better choice than that.
I don't think 12 is right at all.
I understand, you're talking tables, not persons.
I understand, but it's five, what Chuck said is five in the kitchen for every 50. So there's 10, okay? Then you have your wait, hold on, then you have your waitstaff, right?
Right.
Then you have your, which is not going to be two for 100 people, okay? You've got your...
You wouldn't have 10 people, you wouldn't have 10 people in the kitchen. You wouldn't have 10 people in the kitchen for a 100-seat restaurant.
Four to five. That's what he's saying, that's the standard.
No, you'd have five in the kitchen, right?
Per 50.
Four for every 50. So that would amount to eight people.
Eight, and then four left.
And then four servers.
Four servers.
Hostages.
Which, you know, fits this ratio, depending on the type of dining it is. You know, we don't know what type of dining it is, but it's not an outrageous number, it's not, you know, outrageously low. And it seems to be right in the middle of what, you know, the hard numbers for all the various categories are. So it, it doesn't seem to me like it's an off-the-law low estimate.
I just think we have to be very careful here. We're in a street that has the fire department, that's already congested, that already has people parking in the road, as you said, that's right. I mean, I could see somebody coming up and going to the police commission, so there's no more parking in the road on the street going forward. You either have it in your lot, or you don't have it, because a fire truck has to get through. The ambulance has to get through. So I, you know, I'm just trying to set everybody up for success.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And thinking that part through. So I think we can talk about it a little bit further.
Not to be careful, what I'm trying to say is, is you were grappling for a standard, and so we have a standard, so we threw that standard out, and this seems to be right in the middle of the road and standard. That's the only thing. And not to try to influence your judgment one way or another, just that's what the standard is.
Any other questions?
One quick question. Is there going to be like a manager living there, thinking of parking? I think there used to be an apartment in that building.
No, I believe there's a second story, when there was an addition that was put on with the banquet hall, there's a second-story office, but it's not, no, we'd have to go in, I believe, for a different permit, or at least request that as part of it. I don't think there's any residents up there, I think it's just an office.
Thank you.
Keith, it's your turn. Yeah, I just wanted to stress something that was mentioned before, is that really the only reason this is before you has a special use permit is those two little tents for outdoor vending. And our regulations have a lot of strict rules for outdoor vending, that's what requires a special use permit. They could reopen the restaurant at 280 seats or whatever it was, without even coming to the commission. So in a way, like, all this is because of the outdoor vending. They would have to come before you in one way or another for the other changes of use to the building, like the retail and the ice cream shop and things like that, but it wouldn't need to be a special use permit for that. The old plan, when you look at the old plans from the 80s, it, as it was mentioned, it really was that whole rear was all this gravel parking, there was pretty much no landscaping in the parking lot.
I think it might show up on one of these photos a little bit better.
You can sort of see it crow in over the years.
This grassy area. Yeah, over the years, it's been cleared and...
And I think, to what you said about the police commission, I think in their minutes, you know, they did talk about that they'd be keeping an eye on this street, and like you said, they could limit the on-street parking if they thought it was necessary, especially for the fire station if they're having troubles with access there.
Keith, if I may, we did meet with the fire chief, had a discussion with him, as well as George Brennan, the fire marshal. They didn't, I don't believe they gave you any comment or expressed any significant concern for this proposed use. So I just would like to put that on record.
So if the commission were to approve this, the recommended stipulations that we'd put together here are, and this is number one, I want to clarify with everyone, just so we're all on the same page, but outdoor vending is permitted between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and, I wrote the earlier, of either 6:00 p.m. or sundown on Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays from April to October. They've requested that we add in Fridays to that also. And I think they are also requesting, basically just until sundown.
Until sundown.
So it would be the later.
Later, it would be sundown.
Well, sundown, well...
Well...
Just generally sundown.
I think it would have to be sundown, because the outdoor vending regulations say you can't go past sundown. So if sundown comes before 6:00 p.m., they'd still have to stop at sundown.
Okay.
Number two is that the restaurant is allowed a maximum of 100 seats, including outdoor seating. Town's maximum seating notice must be posted on a conspicuous location inside the restaurant. Individual retail restaurant establishments, including the ice cream shop, may have up to eight seats each. Number three, the 2,800-square-foot section of the building labeled as commercial in the submitted floor plan may be utilized as either a retail, retail restaurant, personal services, financial services, daycare center, or office use without additional commission review. The purpose for that one is that there's a section on their floor plan that just says "commercial." So all the things I just read are the things you can do by right in this zone.
A daycare center without coming back, is that what you're saying, Keith?
Yeah, because it is a permitted, they probably don't want to do a daycare center there, but...
Could you go through the list again? I thought you said restaurant was one of the permitted uses?
It was retail, retail restaurant, which is eight seats or less mainly takeout place.
Oh, okay, okay.
But not a, not a full restaurant.
Going home?
Number four, the applicant will apply to the building official through the building permit process for determination of substantial improvement. If the proposed improvements are found to be a substantial improvement, the entire structure will have to comply with current applicable flood hazard requirements, and building modifications will be subject to commission review. Number five, all building and site lighting must be full cutoff. Any new light poles must be reviewed by staff after submission of a photometric plan per Section 8.4, 2.5 of the zoning regulations. Number six, no live music or amplified music above normal dining volume is permitted indoors or outdoors as part of this application. And of course, for the record, they could come back and apply for a special use permit for music.
And what is normal dining volume?
Well, our regulations talk about amplified live entertainment as something you need a special use permit for with a noise study if they want to have musical performances or something. We've run into issues in the past where sometimes people have DJs, which isn't live music, so you can't just say live music. So restaurants always have piped-in music at normal dining volume, so what I'm trying to get at is, they can do what normal restaurants do and just have normal music in the background. But I'm trying to differentiate that between a DJ blaring recorded music.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, can we say no DJ music? But I'm just, and I know, I know, Keith, that we, you know, we've got concerns with our noise regulations and clarity around them. I do believe that there have been issues with Dog Watch and the noise. I do believe that there have been issues with dog watch and the noise, and I know that with the taco, the new taco restaurant there on Broadway, there's noise issues with that as well. I mean, even today, I was in CBS parking lot, and you could hear the music from them. So I don't know what normal dining is, though, you know...
Depends what age you're...
Well, I have very good hearing, so I guess I hear a lot.
I mean, the taco place is allowed to have actual live music in there?
Yeah, but this was...
This was just recorded?
Yeah, 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 the radio.
It wasn't outside, it was inside, but the garage doors open, so it might as well be outside.
Yeah.
Anything else, Keith?
Number seven was just the, this application may be subject to WPCA's moratorium. Eight is just the standard final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer, who had some minor comments on it. Number nine was, record the final plans. I'm paraphrasing here.
And is there one on the traffic study, that they do not want to have a traffic study?
There's not one about doing a traffic study, which normally we wouldn't require for reopening a restaurant. And number 10 was the multi-tenant signage plan that we discussed. Oh, and we did discuss the one about if additional employees beyond 12 are needed, seating shall be reduced as appropriate.
And that's 12 at any one time. I mean, if you're open for lunch and dinner, you've got a couple of shifts, right? So it's not, it's not an absolute limit.
Exactly.
Yeah, I would ask, per largest shift, I would put in there.
Yeah.
You may want to word that a little bit different, because it's the entire building that the parking requirement is based on, so that they could make some adjustment otherwise in the net square footage that might change that parking calculation, so that the overall building would be balanced.
Yeah, that's a good point, because it's not just the restaurant there, so I think I would say...
Total for all of the uses, so...
Seating or...
If more of this building turns out to be storage space for various uses, then the net usable area comes down, and so does the calculation.
Yeah, so I think I would say seating or overall site parking demand shall be reduced as appropriate.
Well put.
Yeah.
They don't drive, kids don't.
But their mothers do.
Before we close the public hearing, Gary, Chuck, do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on this application?
Motion to approve with the stipulations as enumerated so eloquently by Keith.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, you know, I, we're in a situation where there were a lot of permits given forty-plus years ago, and a lot has changed in that area during this time. And I think one of the key things is the traffic. And I know we normally would not require that, but this is kind of a unique situation. We have a building that has not been in use for fifteen-plus years, right? We've had a lot of, we've had other development in that area during that time that has an influx in traffic. We've had accidents resulting in, I believe, very severe injuries on that corner, okay, during that time. And I just wonder if, if there isn't something we should require as far as having some kind of a traffic study done. Again, I just want to set people up for success, not try to take it back later on. So I don't, I know we don't normally require that, but I think it's something to consider. We've got the fire department, we've got the dog watch, which is already there, we've expanded the coastal of the flooring to commercially as well as residentially there. We've had the development that's gone up the hill there within that fifteen years. There's just a lot going on in that area. It has not been stagnant for the last fifteen years, and these permits are, you know, they were granted forty years ago. So maybe if that were an ongoing situation, when all those other developments were happening, maybe that would have been required of them, but that's not how it fell out.
Well, we have Wilcox Marine. Now, Wilcox Marine has a lot of people going in there. Wilcox Marine was there where the flooring company is. People don't buy flooring by the hour, by the minute, but when Wilcox Marine was there, that parking lot was full all day long. So that's one less use we've had of that area. So I think it kind of was balances out what we've lost from Wilcox, and, you know, there's no question that I think we'd be penalizing them because of Dog Watch's parking problem. And I think they're going to have to look after their own parking.
I'm not talking about parking, though.
Well, because, well, I'm talking about people coming in. We got, and this is the best use that we've heard of this building since it's been vacant. And, you know, it's been an eyesore, it needs to be fixed up. We've got someone who wants to do it, and I think he's doing, he's got a good job, a good idea, and I think it would sure improve the area. And I don't think we need to hold it up because of a traffic study. Thank you.
And the other thing I think we need to consider is that, this is not, I mean, it's a little, it's a little different, but it's not a new use. It's not like an applicant coming in for a drive-in theater, or, you know, whatever, rather than an already permitted use. And I think that limits our ability to require things like a traffic study.
I don't know.
I don't know either, but it seems to me that...
We have a motion on the floor, seconded. All those in favor?
David, we have a discussion still, though.
Any more discussion, or we need any more discussion?
Well, we ask, if, if we do have the ability to ask for a traffic study, I didn't hear you answer.
We could, but it's not in the motion.
We're in discussion.
For one thing, the motion should include the request for waivers, traffic study is one of them.
Okay.
You know, asking for a traffic study is one thing, but in my opinion, it's sort of to what ends, because turning them down over traffic just wouldn't be a tenable thing to do for something that already was approved as a restaurant.
Yeah, it's a reuse of an existing use with a few little accessories. I mean, the fact that we aren't permitting six outside vendors and only have two goes to say how restrictive it is. I mean, I just see no, I see no reason to deny it. I mean, it's, you know, it's a good, it's a good plan.
It's a good plan.
To me, parking seems to be the bigger issue than traffic congestion. The traffic study is all about the traffic congestion at certain intersections, which doesn't really seem to be the issue at this place.
Did you, we have a motion and second. All those in favor of the motion? Ben?
Aye.
Gardner? Lynn?
Aye.
Fred? Aye, unanimous. Application approved. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll do the church. Call meeting back to order. Ben?
I'm going to skip the preamble and go right to PZ 2113 SUP and CAM, St. Patrick's Church Corp., S. Terenzia, special use permit and coastal area management review, applications for the demolition and rebuild of the St. Patrick's Church Parish Center, including a 1,500-square-foot addition and a small addition to the rear of the church sacristy, sacristy? Thank you. Property located 33 through 35 East Main Street, Mystic, Sensors Map 174, Block 6, Lot 5, Zone RH 10.
So before you begin, I'd just like to say that I'm a member of St. Patrick's Church. I don't see that as an issue, but if anyone has any concerns, I'm happy to recuse myself.
I have no concern. Do you have any concerns?
Thank you.
Any of the members? See you tonight, see you at the hearing with the five regular members?
I said, we're confident, but she'll be just as tough on them as...
Yeah, she'll be just tough on them as everyone else.
I don't get to talk in church, so I'll talk now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is John Casey, I'm a partner with the law firm of Robinson and Cole, and I have the privilege of representing St. Patrick's Church this evening, of which I'm also a member. So tonight, we're here to seek approval for the new parish center project, which has been long in coming, and very, very exciting project for the parish, and I think for the town and for Mystic as well. With me tonight is Father Kevin Riley, the pastor of St. Pat's, you'll hear from him first. And just to introduce the rest of our team, we have John Doyle from Doyle and Coffin Architects, we have Sergio Terenzia, and we have Rebecca Nolan, our landscape architect. We'll endeavor to keep this moving, so I'm going to step back, and I'm going to let Father Kevin just sort of set the stage for you, why we're here tonight, what the need is, and how we ended up with the project that you have before you, so.
Good evening, Father Kevin Riley. Thank you for your time tonight. I know it's been a long evening for you. Just wanted to give you a quick overview on where we've come from as a parish. A few years back, we started evaluating the state of the current building as we were running into significant maintenance costs, leading us to do an evaluation of the building to determine what the cost of renovation would be versus new construction, which very quickly revealed to us the need for new construction, because renovation would be the same money, and we'd still be left with what was originally built to be a school gymnasium for a school that was then never approved, thankfully, as that would have been a great detriment to St. Michael's in Pawtucket and Sacred Heart in Groton, having oversaturated the area. So we have a school gym that we've been laboring in for the last sixty-plus years. It's now, was never insulated well, and it was starting to fall apart. So we evaluated the needs and essentially set out to say, how can we unite form and function? How can we create a building which will accommodate the needs of the parishioners as they highlighted them for us? And how do we integrate it into the downtown community in a way that looks as if it could have been there all along, to really kind of beautify the area? Not that that was our primary goal, but it was certainly a goal, to maintain the integrity of what the neighborhood has been. Not all of the buildings in our neighborhood are beautiful, and we saw the opportunity to remove a blight and create an aesthetic that integrates into the church without dominating the church, without creating a massive building in scope or scale, which accommodates our needs and appears to have always been there, maintaining a classic New England traditional look. Having grown up in the area in East Lyme, I know, I've known Mystic since the early eighties, and seen the changes that have occurred, and we just want to kind of maintain the charm of our towns. So that was our goal as we set out. Now I'll hand off to John Doyle of Doyle Coffin Architecture to give you the details of what we've come up with. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Father. For the record, John Doyle from Doyle Coffin Architecture. Back in 2017, back in 2017, the parish hired our firm to do a master plan, and I thought a couple of slides from that master plan might be of interest to the commission. The parish was established in 1866. They bought a Methodist church, which is on Church Street, and moved the parish into that. Let's see, in 1908, Bishop Tierney lays the cornerstone of the new church, of the existing church now. In 2009, they move into the church, so you can see how the property's developed, and they convert the old church where they were into the Columbus Parish Hall. And not much happens between there and 1948, but in 1948 through 68, they start to acquire the properties around the neighborhood, along Church Street and all the way, and they, with the hopes of building a school, as Father mentioned. In 1956, they do the first phase of that, which was the Gymnasium Parish Center that exists today. In the 1980s, they added the Mary Garden, the Mary Garden on the side of the church, and so that was just a quick overview, but this is a list of all the milestones of the church over the last 150 years, up to the master planning point in 2017, and if you, 2017, if you look at the, it shakes out to be, you know, there hasn't been any significant development on that site for 60 years. So with that, we want to get into our, what we propose to do, and I'm going to pass it off to Sergio here.
So I'm just going to bring up the site plan, probably the most boring part of the presentation, but that's okay. I'm going to go over some more of the technical aspects of the project, and then hand it back over to John and Rebecca, who are going to wow you with all the beautiful architecture that they're, and landscape architecture that they're proposing. The property located 33 to 35 East Main Street, it's bordered by East Main Street along the south and Church Street along the north. There's a parking area, I think most of you are familiar with, to the northeast portion of the property for the existing church and the parish center, and to orient you also to the west is the, what is called the Shamrock House. The original proposal was to combine the two lots between the Shamrock House. You can see this dashed line, this heavy dashed line here, let's see if I can, runs here to here. This is the separate, this is 31 East Main, where the Shamrock House is. In order to make the project conform, which it was already previously non-conforming, because the parish center is so close to the property line, we're proposing to extinguish that property line. Also, you'll see there was a stipulation, in order to meet our floor area ratio calculation, this is, the building was non-conforming with respect to floor area ratio as well, although it's not shown on this map, I can bring up a GIS map, but the two lots which hold the parking areas for the church will be merged into one large lot, so that we can bring everything into zoning compliance for this property. John went over some of the background of the history of the buildings, when they were constructed, what type of improvements have gone on, and this is obviously the next logical step. Subject property is about one acre in size, and then it will be merged with the other properties. There's pedestrian access along East Main Street as well as along Church Street. The formal entrance to the parking lot is just west of the parish center and north of the church, and that's where the access to the parking lot, that's where the patrons park. There is street parking along East Main Street, but most of the patrons use the main entrance, which is considered the entrance off of Church Street, because that's where the parking is, that's where the, what is considered the main entrance to the parish center, to access it, where the ADA compliance location is. access it, where the ADA compliance location is. It has a, and it'll be highlighted in Rebecca's presentation of some of the improvements of the pedestrian access between the two properties, or between the two buildings and around the buildings, just to make better with an overall flow and connection between all of the buildings on the site, between the church, the parish center, and the Shamrock House. The, the use, just touch upon that we are here for you tonight, under sections three point, three point, three point four, and three point, three point, three point one four, our church is in a place of worship and recreational facilities incidental to a municipal church or school, allowed by special use permit within the RH twenty, RH ten zone, excuse me, residential high-density zone ten. So, we are, we are here for a special use permit, as well as a coastal area management plan, being that we are within the CAM jurisdiction. The budding properties to the southeast, owned by BLCR Holdings, it's a residential property, identified as a, has an office use, according to the property listing report. Bunning properties located to the southwest, East Main Street is the Saint Patrick's Church Corporation, as I mentioned, is the Shamrock House, and the budding property to the northwest, twenty-five Willow Street, is a three-family residential structure. So, there's a varying amount of different types of uses here. All historically have lived with this use and, you know, are accustomed to the activities that happen around it, and we are not proposing anything new or different, just a raise and rebuild of a structure and a use that will be continued to be used. There'll be no intensification of that use. This is an improvement that is required, or that the church has found that they need to do, because, as Father Kevin put it, they've looked into renovation and other improvements, and it's just time that this building needs to be raised and rebuilt to update it, to meet the area and meet the needs of the church, which will expand it from, you know, more or less a cafeteria auditorium-type space to something that's going to have more flexible space for offices and, you know, areas where, you know, after church, they can go and hold small events, after life events, you know, after church, use it for classes and things like that, ancillary to the church use. With respect to the environmental features on site, we're about seven hundred feet from the Mystic River. There's no inland wetlands or watercourses on the site. Stormwater is, is generated from the site, generally flows into the, the street, and then into the municipal stormwater system. As such, we did receive comments from the town engineer requesting that we address those, the additional stormwater that would be generated from the site. The building does have an addition, and John will get into a little bit more detail. It's a little bit difficult to see from my plan, but there is a, an addition that's going on the front of the building in this area here. You can see faintly in the background, the, the pre-existing stairs in this location, the wall and the edge of the building, the, the existing edge of building right here. And then, this is the addition that will be going on. And John's got a nice colored rendering that'll very succinctly show those additions.
Excuse me, Sergio, if I may ask, so all the roof water will go into those four storm?
We're only proposing to treat the proposed additional impervious area.
So, not the roof? It looks like all the roof water's going there?
Not, I believe.
I misunderstood the drawing.
No, I believe we're only going to be treating a portion of the roof that is going to be added. If we tried to put it all in there, it would most definitely overflow and not make it into the ground. It could probably take more than what we've designed for, because it's a conservative design, but it's assumed that the, the rest of the, the building has been there for such a long time. We're only required to retreat, to treat the increase in the impervious and mitigate that. Yep. So, as such, we will be treating the stormwater and some underground infiltration units. We will be going out to test those soils to make sure that they can accommodate it such with, with underground detention and infiltration. Typically, that's acceptable from the town. I've done it with other projects with the town engineer, as long as we verify prior to building permit, and we, we will not be issued that until we prove that we can accommodate that stormwater. So, as far as environmental concerns go, we're really not increasing the amount of impervious area drastically, and that which we are increasing, we will be mitigating prior to entering the stormwater system in the street. The, the property, the building is currently served by municipal water and sewer, as, as such that we don't anticipate any intensification of use. It's going to serve the existing congregation, and there's no, as I mentioned, there's no anticipation that the, the membership is going to increase drastically. We assume that, that there's going to be no change in the intensification of use for water or sanitary sewer. Same goes for traffic and parking. Once again, we're not, we're not proposing any intensification of use. It's to accommodate the existing congregation, the staff, and the church, the folks that are going to be using the church, same as it does now. It's just an improved and better use of the, the space and the amenity.
What's the elevation?
The elevation of what, please?
The new building.
The new building. John Doyle can better address that when, when he comes up, if you don't mind. The answer is I don't know. He does. So, so, with respect to the zoning, we are in an RH, as I mentioned, RH twenty. We meet all the setback requirements. I do want to make one note, we made an error on this plan, and actually, a conservative one, that this, that the property line along Church Street was a rear setback. We assumed East Main was the front, but they're actually both front, but it actually works in our favor. It's only a twenty-foot setback. That being said, we already have an encroachment on Church Street. You can see, this is an incorrect setback, so just pay, just identify that. It actually will be further in. However, there's an existing encroachment, and we're not going to be increasing that encroachment, so there's no variances required. But with respect to all the other zoning requirements, we meet, we meet all the, all the required setbacks and bulk requirements, as I noted before. We, we did go in front of the Architectural Review Board. They gave us a, an approval. I don't think there's any additional commentary on that, and I think John Doyle's presentation will speak for itself as to why they, they didn't have much to, to recommend to us. I think they've done a fantastic job, which I cannot take credit for, on doing the, the architecture and the landscape work, so that, that'll come next. I've already mentioned utilities. It is in a flood zone, and the building will be flood compliant. Once again, John can speak to more of that if you have any questions on it, but for the most part, this has been reviewed by your flood consultant, David Murphy, and he did come in with a round of comments, which we have addressed, mostly identifying things of how the building will be flood compliant. Basically, as the, the other, the, the, the current building is demolished, any crawl spaces, anything below flood elevation will be eliminated. The building will be fitted with flood vents. It will be elevating the, the floor of the structure to the greatest extent possible without having to put it up way up on stilts, but also making sure that it's, it's all flood compliant. So, once again, that'll be more or less deferred to the building official and that through the flood, your flood consultant for the town, to make sure that all of the code requirements are, are addressed prior to a building permit. With that, unless there's any questions for me, I'm going to give it back to John Doyle.
Again, John Doyle, for the record. So, this is an aerial view of where we are today with the campus. I thought what we do is, I, I put together this diagram here that shows, the blue is the existing footprint of both of the building. The church is on top, and the parish center is on the bottom, and the red areas are what the additions are. So, the, so the existing building is eight thousand fifty-five square feet. The new additions add up to two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, for a total of ten thousand two hundred and eighty-two square feet, and that includes the, a small addition at the sacristy. That was really just to get some extra space for the sacristy. That may or may not be on the table, depending on the way the budget shakes out for this. So, that's a real basic diagram. This is the floor plan. I, it's too bad it's not a little bit bigger, but the, the basic idea for this building, as Father mentioned, is to build a new building that meets the current and projected needs of Saint Patrick's Parish and sets the stage for future growth and activity. And also, build it in a way that it responds to the immediate surroundings, as well as the context of the town and the area. And then, thirdly, build a, a building that is safe, inviting, energy-efficient, and accessible to all. So, those three main themes kind of helped us, you know, guided our, our design intent for this. So, the design here is, it's kind of broken down into three elements. The front element in purple there, the church is the green on the right, and then it's connected to the, to the parish center now with a new connector. And the three areas of the building are really the purple there, which are the church offices, kind of the, they, you know, kind of work with the street scape. And the, the blue area, which are the meeting rooms and a community space, that's a flexible room with a, with a commercial kitchen. And the third area is on top, which is the religious formation suite, which is kind of self, it's designed to be self-contained. It has its own bathroom, so you don't have kids wandering around the building and so forth. So, it can work all together, and it, and it can, and it can work, each of the elements can work separately. They're connected by a circulation path that offers a lot of different spaces for gathering along the way, as well as a gradual extended ramp, excuse me, extended ramp that allows handicap accessibility to all areas of both the, the structure, the parish center and the church. So, from the bottom of the screen is the entry from the street and the connector from the church, and you come into a reception area. It also relates to the office area, and then an ante room follows up, up the side, where there's a gathering space, or a pre-function space before gathering into the community space. A handicap accessible ramp rides along the courtyard side, and the entrance to the religious formation suite is on the top, facing Church Street. Now, you can also see that the building is built in the, the old building was, was built in the setback, so we've tried to address that in our plans as well, which I think I'll, I'll address that in the, when I talk about the elevations here. And I'll just, I'll start with the, the roof scape here. So, the, the building has a, we're converting it to kind of a pitched roof building, and so, so there's a hip roof on the corners. We have, try to break down this ten thousand square foot building into smaller masses so that it relates to the scale of Shamrock House next door and some of the other buildings around, so it doesn't take over the, the area. So, it, whenever you see it from any of the views, it'll appear like a much smaller building than it really is. You can see that there's a flat part in the middle of the roof, which is a, is a well created by the pitched roofs, and that is the area for all the mechanical equipment for the building to go on the roof. It's off the ground, it's out of sight from the, from any kind of a viewing from the street, and, and it both obscures it from view and noise. There's a square in the middle, it's a cupola that brings light into the community space, so in the center of the building, the most central spot, has some natural light, which will balance out with the glass door, like, the light entering through glass doors from the terrace doors. There's also a skylight at the entry. Go ahead.
Excuse me, where, can you speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
Sure.
My question is, where, you don't show the mechanicals. Will they be around the cupola?
Well, yeah, they're not showing the actual units, but I think it's, I think we're three or four units. Oh, thanks, John.
But they'll be clustered towards the center of the building.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Because the mechanical room is, is on the floor, like, and the kitchen are right below the, right where the stair is, at the left side of the terrace there. See the, at the end of the terrace where the steps are? So, that, I imagine there'll be a number of units there, and then there'll be definitely a designated one for the front of the building, which will land somewhere where you're talking about. Yes, at the middle of the building.
Thank you.
At least the most obscure we can get them, and the lowest we can get them.
Great.
Okay, the elevations, I apologize, they're not in color. I have a couple of renderings I'll show, but this is really to show the, the way the massing breaks down and some of the relationships between the church and the, and the, and the parish center. So, you can see that we got a, it's a shingle-style building that goes, we're kind of converting it to a shingle-style building that matches with the church, the era of when the church was built, and a lot of the buildings around this area and the, and the coastline. The, there's a heavy trim band that kind of gives the roof a little bit of lift and ties the composition together, and, and the end element on the left matches the existing baptismal area on the church, and it punctuates the corner so that, you know, that, again, breaks down that massing. The lower elevation just shows the, gives you an idea of what the well looks like behind it, when that's piece of section, so you can see how deep that is. And also, this is the, the inside of the courtyard elevation. So, this is, when you look, it's a fairly narrow courtyard, but the lower eve line will allow for a lot more sunlight to come into the church on any given day, so it's a, it's a big improvement over the height of the flat-roofed gym that's in, that's there now. And that, that was a part of our intention. On the right-hand side, you'll see the, the religious formation suite, and it's a little trickier there, because we had, the foundation was obviously over the setback line, and we couldn't, we didn't want to take a chance at adding to the nonconformity. So, we set the, in order to solve that, we set the wall of the back, I want to just go to the next slide, you can see it. Looking at the back, at the, the back that's over the setback line, you can see that the foundation is up, and what we did was we, we set the walls back so that we could maintain the same look with the eaves projecting out, and, and added a coping at the bottom, so it acts as a, so the existing foundation acts as a base for the, for the shingles above. So, that, so there's no increase in the nonconformity over the setback line. And in the background, you can see a little bay window on the sacristy with a fence at the top, and our intention...
Where is?
Yeah.
There's a sacristy back.
Yeah. There's a, we're adding a fence at the top of that that will also, if we can, budget permits, we want to move the mechanicals up to that roof, and be obscured by that railing. Okay? And then, to the right is the, to the right is the, the religious formation suite that projects out, and we've set the walls back there, so we have no increase in the nonconformity. And then, to the left of that is the entrance, the primary entrance to the building, which is the handicap accessible entrance. Oh, and one more thing on that. On the left is a wall section that you can see there, and what we've started to do here is look at all the materials in relation to being in this flood zone. So, and I'm going to go back to a slide we had in the master plan four years ago, and this, this shows really that, right off the bat, we've been thinking about this flood plane management. And you can see that the church, the, the height of the center, we're, we're using the existing foundation, and will match all the other foundation, or the floors' levels, up to it is eight point two feet, which just answered the question from before. And, and so, just showing that we, we have had this on the radar for a long time, and so, we've been in touch with Dave Murphy from the town, and we've... And so, we've been in touch with Dave Murphy from the town, and we've been following the guidelines in the technical bulletin from FEMA. There's an example of the chart of materials in the center there that we've been kind of selecting our materials from, and we've also worked with the consultant floodproof.com, and they are, we're working on a dry floodproof system for the building that will keep the building dry throughout. I'll just go a couple more here. And so, this is a perspective drawing of the new addition next to the existing church. Shows a little bit of Shamrock House there, and you can see how the scales match up or stay low. And how the building relates to the street scape. And then, and then this is the view of the primary entrance from the parking lot that just, using the same language as at the front of the building, that kind of, you know, marks the entrance, so everybody's pretty positive which, where to go into the building. And with that, I think I will, if there's any questions, I can answer, or I can turn it, turn it over to Rebecca.
Sorry, just again, John Casey, for the record. John, could you just, I think to answer the chairman's question, the finished floor elevation of the new center, when it's done? I know it's in the plans, but just if you want to...
Yeah, the new, the new is to match the old, it'll be 8.2 feet. So we are about, and I think flood elevation is 11, so we're going to move, all the water, dry waterproofing will be at 12, and any of the...
Yeah, we're, we go for the box, make it 12.
Yeah, and we're, so we're going to go up higher than the, we're going to go up above the requirement, and then, so any of the electrical panels, any equipment that has to be above will be put inside the building and above that level. So that's what we're, we're starting the design, we have it in mind for the design right now, and it's coming into the design development phase where we can really, you know, drill down on that. But it's on the radar for every aspect of the flood management.
Thank you. And because it's a non-residential structure, the regulations allow dry floodproofing, and as John mentioned, I think Sergio mentioned, what used to be a crawl space is going to be filled in, so up to that eight-foot finished floor elevation, there's not going to be anything underneath that, that's going to be solid.
Excluding the cupola, what is the height of the building?
I'm going to have to zoom in on that. That's from the, that's from the floor level, and then from grade, that would be 19, because it's four feet up, up from grade. So 19 feet to the top.
This is a little tall for me, sorry.
Thank you. Rebecca Nolan, landscape architect, for the record. I'm going to run through this very quickly. I think everyone else has given kind of an overview of the uses of the different areas of the church. Let me just scroll down. So the focus of the landscape, I think overall, is just to point out that we wanted these two buildings to really feel connected, especially from the street scape on the East Main side and from the street scape on the Church Street side. There is some large trees, they're not beautiful trees, but we are hoping to save them, and so we've marked them that way during construction. There's, there's one in front of the Shamrock House down here, it's a Norway maple, and then there's another one in the back, another large shade tree that we're also hoping to keep, as well as a very nice flowering, I believe it's a dogwood, right behind the church. So those are kind of the three trees to remain on the site. We have an existing buffer along the, that would be the western property line that we're maintaining, mature trees already, you know, well-established in that area. Not planning on making too many changes around Shamrock House, just kind of cleaning up that area. And then towards the back, you'll see we've added, I believe it's eight cryptumaria, which are narrow columnar evergreens, to further block the eastern, or the western property line. That's in addition to a six-foot fence, a six-foot privacy fence, so this is, you know, to both, I would say, provide some privacy for the church, but also, you know, keep any sort of separation there. Right now, it's kind of a mess and needs to be just cleaned up and organized. Towards the back of the site, you'll see, we are keeping a 10-foot, that was one of the comments from the town planner, was to make sure we're keeping a 10-foot offset from, from the residential property line. There's an existing backup parking area, refuse area, it's, you know, just unorganized, so we're just planning to reorganize that space. We're showing a dumpster here, and the dumpster would have an enclosure to match the fence, so that would be the six-foot-high privacy fence. Along Church Street, I mentioned, you know, we really want to contribute to the street scape. This is an opportunity to do so with this new redevelopment. There, we're adding two street trees here. There is one street tree that is on, it's on the town's property, it's in rough shape, so I think we're proposing that, you know, we would replace the one very ill-looking street tree with two, you know, new street trees to go in.
Yeah, the curb trees right here.
Yep. And then another comment that came up during the planning and engineering reviews, to add a bike rack, which our clients were really actually very happy to accommodate. There are parishioners that do ride bikes, so we've accommodated that here next to the main entrance, where there's also a drop-off. The space in between the two buildings that I think John touched on very briefly is really going to be a very private space, it's more of like sanctuary space. You know, it's access in and out of the church here, but it's really just, you know, extra space for perhaps like a solitude garden, or it's a shady area. I'll show you some examples of that. The general planting plan is really to, you know, just enhance the street scape along East Main, using a lot of flowering trees and shrubs, spring bulbs, connecting the existing patio that comes out in front of the church, connecting that to this entryway in the front, just to further make that connection.
I wouldn't work too hard to save Norway maples.
I know. The, we, they're, they're actually in decent shape, even though they're Norway maples. So at this point, I think, and depending on how we set up the...
They go free, they get large and they fall down.
That's true. Depending on where the phasing is set up for construction, I think we can revisit that, but our intention is to not take down any trees that aren't necessary. I'm just going to show you very quickly the planting palette. You know, it's evergreens, it's using a lot of the same plant material in the Mary's Garden, low-maintenance grasses along the street scape, adding some bulbs in there. Here, I'll go back really quick, just some flowering trees, hydrangeas, I think you guys get the idea. Proposed materials, we're looking to match the, there's an existing terrace as you come out the front of the church that's bluestone, so we're proposing to match that same material with the, with the entrance to parish center, as well as, I believe, the terrace that is off the east side of the new building. Most of our pathways would be on permeable surfaces, we'd be looking at decomposed granite or a type of gravel for any of the pathways behind the new parish center. And then in terms of the little area I mentioned in between, this is, you know, an area that would really just be for, you know, if there was any potted plants, I know there's a ton of them in the parish center right now that could go outside in the summer, this is, that's simply a place for that to happen. The privacy fence, six feet, I think we want to make sure that the colors match the architecture, and so, you know, the, whatever we select for the, for the fencing here would be the same on the dumpster enclosure and any of the detailing that's on the building. And then this is just to show, you know, options for a simple bike rack. I think that is everything on the site plan. I just want to go back up quickly to, you know, there's these kind of three areas. You have the area in the back where I mentioned that there's an existing tree that we planned to save, there's B is the existing entrance to, from the Mary Garden, up this, you know, ramp situation into the church, and then C is the Mary Garden out front. So this is just, those are kind of three areas where we tried to take, you know, the design concept that really the parishioners have, have supported and put together over the years, and try and draw that into the new design.
Do you have any elevations of your landscape plan?
I don't have elevations specific to landscape, but I can pull up the elevations that John did.
Well, I was just curious to have them overlaid to look at more of the finished product with your landscape plan.
Yeah, let me just see.
I get the idea, it's just for graphic.
To, I think what you might be asking is, how high are the plants and the windows on the, on the front? I believe we, the part of the design for the architecture was actually to bring that very much down to a street level, and so the windows aren't so much like looking out over the street, but they're, they're really at level, and so the plantings would be, you know, were max of, you know, two to three feet high. So really just kind of, you know, coordinating the Mary Garden with the, with the plantings in front of the new building. Basic foundation plantings, but I would say, you know, accentuating, spring bulbs, things like that would flower around Easter, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
How about salt tolerance on the plantings, particularly in the floodplain areas of the site?
Yeah, so the, here, let me just show the planting palette again. A lot of the plants that we chose are actually off of the coastal area management plan, has a plant list that's vetted by UConn and URI. So a lot of these plants are native, especially the ones that you see at the bottom, which would be in most of the beds. It's really quite simple. I mean, it might look like a lot of plants here, but this is a pretty fairly big lot, and we're really, you know, we're putting in some big plant material when the, when the construction first goes in to kind of give it that finished look, but it's very minimal planting in general around the, around the foundation. And part of that, I think, is to, you know, give the church and the parishioners some flexibility on what they want to see out there. And so, you know, we're proposing the native plants that are low-maintenance as kind of the foundation plantings for that.
Thank you. Any questions?
What's the, what's the width between the church and the new building?
So it's pretty tight. It's a, I believe it's 10 feet max. I don't know, John, if you want to, I'm just going to pull it up here. All of the walkways, so you see there's a, we're proposing planting beds around the edge, those are about four feet wide with a five-foot wide, so it's, it's between nine and 10 feet wide, give or take.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you. Any other questions with the applicant? Anyone else like to speak in favor of his application? We got, we got a list here.
All right, in favor?
Yeah, Paul.
Paul Sarter, 12 Jackson Avenue. Clearly in favor of the project. I've been not only a neighbor, but a parishioner, was involved with this from the beginning. It's, it's really exciting project, as our team has talked about, we're basically taking a building that wasn't functional, that we've, we've dealt with for so, so many years, and we finally come up with a plan that allows us to be, again, functional for the parish, but also for the community. I've been before you folks, and I've seen a lot of these presentations and a lot of buildings that have come before you in Mystic, and usually it's a project that is trying to maximize the square footage on a site, maximize the height, try to push it another five feet. What I really like about this, even if I was outside looking in, is that we have a project that's actually less than it can be. It stays within scope. Our original design was actually to stay within the foot, stay within the, the building envelope and pull the rear of the building back into that 25-foot rear setback, but that would have required us to knock down the Shamrock House, and then we've got other issues, and there's cost issues. So what this has allowed us to do is we've shrunk our, the square footage of what we could have built and created a design that fits our needs and also does the least disruption to the neighborhood, the least disruption to the existing building, the historic home, which we call the Shamrock House, while making tremendous improvements. So we're pretty excited about it, and I want to thank my team and thank you all for being patient with us.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed to his application? Any general comments on his application? Keith?
Well, so the, the decisions to be made here, decision on the waivers requested, decision on the coastal area management application, and decision on the special use permit application. If this were to be approved, there's a few recommended stipulations. Just paraphrasing here, number one is recording the final plans, number two is addressing town planner's comments dated June 8th, number three, addressing the town engineer's comments, which were not major comments, he recommended approval of it if it, you know, with that stipulation. Number four, posting of an erosion sedimentation control bond, and number five is that the design engineer of record provide inspection services for the stormwater management system. You know, as was mentioned, one of the comments I had was just that it may be that all the lots there have to be combined to meet the floor area ratio requirements, that was a little unclear, but that's, that could easily be done. And also that the two, one of the comments was that the two parking spaces, I don't know if you can see them there, that were sort of near the dumpster, they were too near... There were two near, two new parking spaces. And those were within the buffer that you need for parking lots from a residential property. So those had to go away as parking spaces, which, with, they don't need, they don't need those parking spaces. They don't need any more parking than they have, just to, based upon, upon this. And, uh, that's a, that's about it.
That's it. Okay. Any other questions this time? I hear a motion that calls the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. I hear a motion on this application.
I think a motion to approve the application with the stipulations as recited by Keith.
Second. Any discussion?
Does this include the waivers in the can?
The application includes the waivers in the can?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Application approved. No one's going to be done.
We go, we go in the demo.
Do I hear most, any of the else come to call the commission? Hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.